Good luck, Chair.
Thank you. Hello and good afternoon. Welcome to this meeting of the Monmasheer County Council, Thursday 24th of June. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen, members and officers. Thank you very much for joining us. We'll move on to agenda item number one, apologies for absence. Nick?
Thank you, Chair. I've had apologies from councillor Kevin Williams and councillor Lynda Guppy.
Thank you very much, noted those. Moving on to agenda item two, declarations of interest. Does any, do any members have any declarations to declare?
Yes, Chairman. Peter Fox here. I have two declarations of interest. First one is 5.4, Monmasheer Replacement Local Development Plan Preferred Strategy. I declare a personal and prejudicial interest in that one. I think that's what I've done in the past. And also on the motion, item 6.3 regarding the lavenets. The reason I'm declaring a personal prejudicial interest there is my son is one of the lavenet fishermen. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Peter. Does anyone else have any declarations of interest to declare? No, in the case we'll go on to three, which is public questions. Nick, you can confirm, I don't think we've had anything come through, have we?
No, Chair, nothing's come through.
Okay, thank you. And then moving on to agenda item four, chairman's announcements and receipts of petitions. I've got nothing to announce, but I have been given a petition from councillor Brown. Councillor Brown?
Good afternoon, everyone, and good afternoon, Chairman. I'm delighted to present this petition, online petition for council, on behalf of local residents to introduce a 20 mile per hour speed limit in the residential areas of Shynuton and Minnichback villages, together with an indicative map. The petition has been signed by over 200 people, 85% of which are in the local area and others with links to it. This is important because the lanes and roads of the adjoining villages are dangerous for pedestrians and schoolchildren as there are few pavements and little street lighting. The primary school is situated on a narrow lane between the two villages and due to a lack of pavements, people, prams and mobility aids all have to use the roads. Reducing the speed limit will make the villages far safer for everyone. Both the Shynuton Community Council and I have campaigned together over a number of years to push for this reduction. I am pleased that the county council has agreed to put this in this year's 21/22 budget and I very much hope that it will be implemented as soon as possible. The petition demonstrates that the community are fully behind this change. Shynuton primary school pupils have also been supporting the 20 is plenty campaign by organising a poster competition on reducing the speed limit to 20 miles per hour, which was won by George Siddle. I very much hope that this change will get the priority it deserves and it's not one which will change to a default 20 mile per hour speed limit due to the lack of street lighting. Thank you, Chairman, for allowing me to formally present this petition today. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brown. And I can confirm, safe receipt of the petition, thank you very much. And also confirm that it has been sent on to the relevant directorate. Thank you, Louise.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, moving on then to item five, reports for council. The first is 5.1, Chief Officer for Children or Young People Annual Report. And we have Chief Officer Will McKeen with us to present on this. Thank you, Will.
Thank you, Chair, and good afternoon, council. And I'm grateful for the opportunity to be able to present my chief officer's report for the year 2020-2021 to you this afternoon. I've prepared a short presentation for this afternoon, which I hope will draw out some of the salient points from the report itself, but also will highlight some of the changes that we've seen since the conclusion of the reporting period. So that's the 31st of March this year. And I think probably the first thing I want to say before I do share the screen with the presentation is just that hopefully members will have seen that the report this year is very different to previous years. Much of the information and the data that the report has previously captured has simply not been available to us as we've worked through the pandemic. Those items around attendance, exclusions, examinations and so on simply haven't been available. So the report should hopefully look and feel very different. I think just on that point though, the one thing I would say is that in the direction of travel of the Welsh Government and how they wish to see us work with our schools, that comparative data, the comparative position of schools' outcomes and so on would no longer be shared with members in an aggregated way. So we were moving away in any case, but the report is there really to highlight the work of all of our schools and the authority itself over the past year. So if I may, Chair, I'm going to start to share my screen now, if that's okay. And hopefully, well, just take us through this presentation. And I think really importantly, I think at the outset, what I want to do first of all is to really pass my thanks on to everybody who works in Monmasheer's schools before I say anything about how we've responded to the pandemic. Because I think everybody, everybody from our caretakers to our caterers, our cleaners, have done an incredible job this year to make sure that our schools were safe and secure and that our children, when they've been able, have been able to attend the school. And I think they have made in the last 16 months absolutely incredible contribution in what have been extraordinary times. So I think that was the first thing I wanted to say. I think just, sorry, I'm jumping around a little bit, but when I've concluded my presentation and I'll obviously be happy to take questions from members, I'd be happy to take questions on anything within the report, not just in the presentation as it stands this afternoon. So I think the first thing I wanted to talk about this afternoon to members was that we're now 12 months on from my last chief officer's report nearly exactly and 14 months on from the presentation, from the publication of our ESTIN report. And that document, the ESTIN report, identified four very clear areas that we needed to focus on and we agreed with those entirely and they were in line with our evaluative kind of undertakings and activities. And I really felt that last year, as we kind of headed into March, we were well placed to pursue those recommendations. But clearly, the last 15 and 16 months have provided incredible challenges and we have been on a largely operational footing, supporting schools with the interpretation of operational guidance, making sure the schools are ready and safe, that they respond when the cases do arrive in schools, that they're able to deal with those, that their children are secure and so on. And we have actually, you know, not pursued some of those areas with the speed at which we would have done had the pandemic not happened. But as we emerge as a schooling system from this latest phase of the pandemic and our schools are looking forward to the new academic year and they're looking forward very much to seeing the school environment much more normalised, I guess, in a sense, you know, without hopefully some of the more stringent protective measures such as the mask wearing and so on. We will all look to move back into our response mode to ESTIN. I think the narrative that we've shared with schools, the narrative we shared with our partners has never shifted away from those key kind of areas of excellence, free school meal attainment and achievement, how we work to provide for children with additional learning needs and how we become even better at evaluating what we do. But as we look into 2021, 2022's activities, there are significant new areas of development within the education sphere that I think it's really worthwhile bringing members' attention to. So you'll see on the right hand side of this slide, some of the key things that our schools and us in MCC are coming to terms with and grappling with at the moment and making sure that we're best placed to really kind of make good progress on. So if I start at the bottom left, the renew and reform, this is the Welsh Government's response for education after the pandemic. So this captures their aspirations, it captures the significant amounts of funding that we've received and it really kind of reflects the agenda and how we are to pursue that in the coming year. And that is clearly, it's been one of the first publications for the new minister and that will be something which we have to work very closely with our partners in the Education Achievement Service to make sure that we're working in that area. Above that, I referenced the new Additional Learning Needs Code of Practice for Wales 2021. This will be a huge endeavour for schools across Monmasheer. It fundamentally changes the lines of responsibility and accountability for children with additional learning needs. There is, the code itself is exceptionally, I think I'd probably be fair to say, complicated. It's highly legalistic. We are still waiting for Welsh Government to publish the guidance for schools on the new code. The new code comes into practice on the 1st of September this year. So it's going to be something which we have to work very closely on. Just moving around, I guess, in a clockwise way, the curriculum for Wales is, you know, nobody can underestimate how important the curriculum for Wales is and the significance that that will have as all of our schools transform their practice to become a purpose-led education system. It will be hugely opportunistic for many of our schools. There will be great amounts of energy put into creating a curriculum for our learners that is new and vibrant and relevant, but it will be a challenge in terms of how we do that. And then finally, and relevant to much of what I'll talk about today, the Framework on Embedding Whole School Approaches to Emotional and Mental Wellbeing. One of the features of the last Welsh Government was the focus that they put on emotional wellbeing and mental health. And this document really frames the expectations for schools around it. So we're coming out of a pandemic. We know that there are areas that we still need to address, but there are other significant areas that we need to focus on as well. So I make reference to the fact that we're kind of developing from a stable platform, but actually, you know, there is huge amounts of new work to be done and undertaken in the future. I thought it would be worthwhile just reflecting a little bit on how the return to school has gone, particularly through the summer term. We find ourselves three weeks out from the end of term now. And just on the left hand side there, you can see that all four of our secondary schools have attendance data over 90%, as at the end of May. I think that's very positive. And three of our schools have seen attendance rate increasing since the start of the summer term. So I think that represents really good work by the schools in terms of how they've engaged with learners. And the four schools, although their attendance has fallen, it's only fallen by 0.1%. And interestingly, right across the all four secondary schools, only 23 learners haven't come back to school as a consequence of having vulnerabilities around their health and the pandemic. And those learners are of course supported through blended and remote learning provided by their schools. And again, in our primary schools, all 30 of our primary schools have attendance over 90% and 26 of the 30 have seen their attendance improve. So there's a high degree of confidence in our schools and the work they're doing to keep their learners safe. I think really positively, if you look at the penultimate bullet point, you'll see that 17 schools, their attendance is currently better than it was in the last whole year of data that we have, which was 2018/19. And in primary schools, only seven children haven't come back due to health vulnerability. So when you take across the piece that we support roughly 10,000 students, if you think that only 30 haven't come back to school physically because of the pandemic, I think that's a really kind of, a real demonstration of the strength and the lengths of which the schools have gone to to protect their learners. One point just in the bottom right of that slide, I just wanted to draw your attention to, there have been heightened levels of anxiety amongst our learners about return to school. And I know many of you as members and as governors will have visited schools and you'll have seen the one-way systems, the masks, sanitizers, some of the staggered approaches to breaks and playtimes, the fact that children eat their lunches in the classroom, this whole kind of range of responses to the operational guidance. What our Educational Psychology Service has been doing is producing really exceptional support for our schools around emotional-based school avoidance. So that's those children who have an emotional response to school, some of whom don't want to attend school, but that's really about bringing children, families and professionals together to put in place mechanisms to allow those children to attend school. I think wellbeing has been a pivotal part of our considerations throughout the pandemic. And I think, you know, the Welsh Government in fairness set the tone right at the start of the pandemic that wellbeing of students and staff was an absolute focus. I think what we've seen is that schools are uniquely placed in our communities to support our learners. They have access, they make that contribution, they have a very clear awareness of their children and what their children need. We've had recent discussions within senior leadership team and, you know, it was highlighted that probably three children in every Monmasheer class have experienced those things around anxiety, concerns and kind of impacts on their mental health over the last year. So that's a high number and when you kind of think about a classroom in front of you, those three children, you know, being aware that three children are struggling in that class is clearly something for us to be concerned about. But we've also seen evidence from the Children's Commissioner for Wales's report last year that actually, you know, 58% of children reported that they felt happy during most of the time during the Covid crisis and 37% were not worried about coronavirus. So I think it's important that we always kind of walk forwards, ensuring that we are aware and conscious of the challenges that our children face, but without over-articulating them to such an extent that we're beginning to talk the crisis into being. And just on the right hand side of that slide, just picking up some of the support interventions and services that are available for our children, young people, right across the Monmasheer itself, and those are services which are, some of which are delivered by CYP Services, some are in social services and some are in our youth services and delivered through Monlife. And there's a huge range there, which are graduated and appropriate both across age ranges and the level of need that the children are experiencing. I also just wanted to touch on some of the other aspects around wellbeing. Our Educational Psychology Service has taken on an expanded role, so it now focuses very much around wellbeing and they work from an individual basis all the way up to kind of an authority-wide or even regional-wide approach to how we can support all of our children. And our schools have responded hugely positively as well. We've seen growth of our emotional literacy support assistance, our ELSAs, so we've now got about 80 across all of our schools. And they are integral to working with both individuals and small groups of children to make sure that they feel safe in school, that they are able to communicate how they feel and through that communication, we're able to put in place the necessary support for them. And one of the benefits that has come about through the pandemic, and it's always, you know, strange to talk about benefits in that sense, but one of the benefits has been that we've seen a really positive development of technology platforms, which have actually helped us enhance and broaden our training packages into school. And I think the final point I just wanted to touch on is that through the Welsh Government and Public Health Wales, on the right hand side, you can see that there is now a whole school assessment process whereby every school will have to judge itself across those six domains to understand what they're doing and how well they're doing with their children to support their mental health and wellbeing in the school setting. Now, the next couple of slides are going to be just for members today, really, a bit of an insight into a piece of work that we believe will really benefit the wellbeing, the aspirations and the ambitions of our children across Monmasheer. And it touched, and it's contained within the full report itself, and that's around the Compass for Life project that we've rolled out across our schools. And I'm going to show two slides around this and I'm going to show two very short videos, if members will allow me, just to reflect what our children talk about when they talk about resilience and the second one is around what our children talk about when they talk about fairness and equity. So I'm going to hopefully play the first one and this is the one which talks about resilience.
I love talking to children about the warrior cardinal. And I always tell them, the first thing I'm looking for is your strength of character. It's not about being big and tough, but just listen to the kind of statements that these children make about that strength of character. It's not about somebody that's big and strong, it's about fighting for what you believe in. For me, a warrior is somebody that fights for what they believe. It's about their strength of character, it's what they love. Yes.
So just like Amber said, warriors, they fight, but like basically like they never give up.
I also think that I might do the list for Black Lives Matter.
Oh, well, let's put that one down. I think that's a great one, isn't it? Why not? It's a really good current thing to do as well, isn't it? Well done. Yes. Never gives up, absolutely.
Or you're just, um, people who pass the water, so it can be like, it's people who are fighting against Covid or Black Lives Matter.
Exactly. So it's about, we're fighting for something we believe in, exactly what Amber said, wasn't it, which was about, we've got to make sure it's about what we love doing. Really good. Yes.
When I see the least of warriors are always fighting for the world, please. But when I want to tell, I see soldiers and what I think is that they fight for their lives, they fight for their families and friends.
Right, they fight for their lives, their family, their friends. So absolutely wonderful. One of the little girls in this class said she wants to be a CEO. And because the warrior is about actions, it's about doing something, I asked her what she'd like to know and she said, I'd just like to know what it's like to be a CEO. So I asked her if she'd write a letter to me and I would forward it to a CEO of a large business. She did so and I got the letter the next morning. And then I sent the letter to the CEO of AO, John Roberts, who replied to her 24 hours later, talking to about the steps that he took and what he thought she needed to do. There's nothing like actually stepping up and delivering on what you said you would do, because then you get support. The warrior is also about having teams around you to help you.
So you can see in the top of this slide, the letter that came back from the chief exec of AO.com. And, you know, it's been hugely valuable for children in many of our schools now. We're rolling out the programme and you saw some children there from Overmono to experience this and to hear them, and I've sat in on many of these sessions, to hear them articulate what their super north star is, their vision of what they want to achieve, you know, what they're going to do to get there, understanding the steps that they need to take, has been hugely rewarding. And I think it's a project that will really help add to the ambition and add to the aspiration of our children across Monmasheer. So this, this second video, I think, really touches on a number of things, which I think we'll all think are hugely important. The East Cardinal of the Compass project is all around your ethos and the values you have. So I'll go and be quite again and let the children be far more eloquent.
I love talking about the East Cardinal, our ethos. Children have an innate intelligence when it comes to what is right and wrong. We're discussing fairness in this video and it's about two children that are treated unfairly. Just watch how engaged the children are, but also the discussions that happen when we try to discuss what they've actually just seen. So as a table, just discuss what's the story behind that video? What are they trying to tell us in that video about the word fairness? Discuss.
Boys and girls should get treated the same way.
Right, really important. So that's fair, isn't it? So straight away, we know that is definitely fair. Really good. What do you have?
So, um, the girl's got less than the boys is unfair because it's a bit like racism, but just in a different way. That boys get more than girls, right? It should be that they both get the exact same amount, not just one gets more and one gets less.
Really good. I think that's great. What else do you want?
I agree with Joseph. You shouldn't judge someone just because that's how they are. Like because you are a girl, you can't really help that you're a girl. If you're a boy, you can't really help that you're a boy.
Exactly. So we should just be judged fairly on the same work that we're doing. That's got to be fair, hasn't it?
They don't put the same mark for each other. So just they should get the same and that's sweet.
Exactly, because that's how we can measure, isn't it? By that's got to be fair. Yes.
The boys and girls, they are treated in some ways, but they should be treated the same way. And the same, just don't judge it by its cover.
A really good one, isn't it? Don't judge it by its cover. We are different in some respects, but actually we're the same in lots of different, and it's fair. Yes.
So for example, as Joe mentioned, racism, just because it's some white or some black, you shouldn't give the white person more than the black.
Exactly. And that's fair. That's why we're looking at the word fair. I have done this exercise in hundreds of schools and it's exactly the same thing. You see children become really engaged about the discussion. They articulate their arguments phenomenally well, but more importantly, their ethical intelligence is at a different level compared to adults. We can learn a lot from them.
So I think, you know, they're two videos and I'm really grateful to my colleagues in Overmono, the children in those two videos came from Overmono. And I think, you know, we see that replicated in all of the schools we go to. There's a sense of that fairness, a sense of enthusiasm that is absolutely compelling. And I think it's really important that this project continues to roll out. I've been to schools who were once some of the kind of the pilot schools, they're now embedding it in how the children articulate what they want to achieve on a termly basis. It's becoming part of their language. And I think as we roll it out and we take it into the secondaries, it will become a critical part of how we describe our aspirations as we move from key stage two into key stage three. And that, hopefully, that continuation of the language and that continuity will help teachers on both sides really understand what children in Monmasheer want to achieve. I think moving away from that, those kind of really, you know, positive and insightful parts that the children have just given us, I just want to offer two more slides on slightly more pragmatic and prosaic issues, I think. The first is around assessment and around ministerial announcements. So ordinarily, we're coming to that time of year when exams have been sat and they would be with the examination boards to be marked, et cetera. But this year is very different. In my report that you've all had sight of, I set out in that document, the impact of last year's approach to assessment and grading. And I'm sure many of you will remember the algorithm, the centre assess grades and the whole policymaking process that really blighted many of our young people's summer last year. And that was a huge concern. So this year, the Welsh Government, through a design and delivery group, which is a group of head teachers from across Wales, and one of our head teachers was a representative on that group, has settled upon a process of what we call in Wales, centre determined grades. And I think it's really important for members to be aware today, just the sheer extent of work that schools have undertaken. So ordinarily, schools would prepare their children who are in examination groups to take examinations. This year, they've also set the assessments, they have marked them, they've moderated the outcomes and they are now going through the process of sharing provisional grades, and provisional is a critical word there, with their learners. Now, just for completeness, King Henry VIII in Albegavenny shared its provisional outcomes last Friday. Chepstow and Monmouth will share theirs tomorrow with their year 11 and 13 learners and Caldercot will share theirs on the 29th of June. So this is a live process that we're working through at the moment and it's been a huge undertaking by the schools across Monmasheer. Related to assessment, the new minister has made a series of announcements this week, which I think are pertinent and important for you as councillors to be aware of. So he's stated very clearly that there should be no use of examination series data for accountability purposes at a school or an aggregated level. So again, similarly to 2020, we won't be using the outcomes of children's examination or assessment processes to compare back in time. So we won't be used in terms of trend analysis and we won't be holding schools to account using that data. Furthermore, there won't be any categorisation of schools. Furthermore, there won't be any categorisation of schools and members who are part of the Children and Young People's Select Committee will be aware. Normally, we bring a report which talks about the number of schools that are green, yellow, amber or red schools. That won't happen this year. That's been set aside. And finally, ESTING won't be inspecting schools until the spring term at the earliest. There will be some activity in terms of some of the schools that are in a statutory category. But I'm very pleased to say that Monmasheer doesn't have any schools in an ESTING follow-up category. So that won't affect Monmasheer schools at the moment. But I think as we look forward into the future and into the future years, we're working very closely as five directors across Gwent, working with our colleagues in the Education Achievement Service to make sure that when I come back, hopefully in the future and report to you, you know, how your schools are performing. We're looking to find a framework that you can engage with that's meaningful and will actually allow you to understand where our schools are in terms of the progress that they're making and in terms of the standard of education that they're delivering to our children and young people. And the final slide, I just want to touch on very briefly because it's been such a source of conversation and discussion in the past, is around schools' finances. And the year just gone has seen a significant shift in the number of schools in a deficit position and in terms of the global financial position. So at month nine, we were showing a collective deficit of schools of £166,000 and 12 schools in a deficit position. But with large incoming grants at the end of the year from Welsh Government, with an ability to claim on the hardship fund for costs associated with Covid, we closed the year end with a collective surplus across the schools of £3.4 million and just two schools in a deficit position. And I think my commentary around that is I think that's hugely positive because it forgives the schools the resources that they need to really engage with the renew and reform agenda that the minister has just set out. It gives them the opportunity to support our learners in the future. But what it has done and what I've been talking to governors and to head teachers about is that it has shifted the balance in terms of available resource between the local authority and the schools. And the schools' balances now mean that they will be, to a certain extent, far more, in a far stronger position to determine what they need to spend their money on as schools. Some of them have got very significant surplus figures now, particularly in the primary sector, and we'll be working very closely with them to make sure that their investment plans really focus on the learners who need that most and have the most significant impact to make sure that our children really do not lose as a consequence of the pandemic itself. So that concludes my presentation for this afternoon. And I will now obviously be happy to take any questions that members have. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Will. I'm sure we could all learn something from those schoolchildren there. The portfolio cabinet member, Paul Pabio, has asked to come in first. Paul.
Sorry, Chair. Would it be okay if I come in at the end to conclude? Okay, sorry, Chair.
Okay, so we'll take the hands as they've been raised. Councillor Grokut.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you for your report, Will. And if I could add my thanks to all of those members of staff throughout our education system in Monmasheer who really have stepped up to the mark in the last year or so. And we owe them an incredible debt. So I have two questions and they're both around vulnerability. And the first is around vulnerable learners. And I think we've become very good at identifying what you might call the traditional vulnerable learner. What I'm concerned about are another cohort of children who, as a result of the pandemic, might become vulnerable in a new way. For example, they might have faced bereavement within their family or increase in domestic abuse or living in a domestic situation where with the best will in the world, they have not been able to learn electronically. We need, I think, to be able to maintain new structures to identify these youngsters. And because so much of the concern and vulnerability is going to be around social and even medical issues, we need to have systems for identification that are not only based in our schools, but also in our social care structures and our medical procedures. And I wonder if you could say something about the way in which those, if you like, newly vulnerable youngsters are going to be taken care of and identified effectively. And then a second, and you'll be pleased to know, briefer question. What section in your report talks about vulnerable learners? I think we also have to acknowledge that we will have vulnerable staff and that many of our teachers and other workers in schools and education will themselves, because of their experiences, be vulnerable at their own personal level. And you put in a very brief mention about how our EdPsych service will look at staff as well as pupils. I wonder if you could just tell us a little bit about the duty of care that we have to our employees and how we will ensure that their needs are identified and met. Thank you.
Thank you, Martin. Are you happy to answer those as we go along, Will?
Yeah, more than happy. Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Councillor Grokut, for the questions. I think your first question is really pertinent. And I think as we've gone on throughout the pandemic, we've reflected that the pandemic will affect people in many different ways. And one of the things we talked about in Select Committee and in other settings is, you know, how the whole remote learning piece was a challenge for people in certain ways. So for some families, it might have been a period where parents were at home able to help and support their learners. For other families, it might have been a period where parents had to spend a significant amount of time on team calls, for instance, which came to be something which kind of was there for many. And they wouldn't necessarily have had that same opportunity to support their children. Interestingly, the Welsh Government has just appointed a range of new deputy directors for education. I spent some time with the new deputy director for equality in education recently. And we were talking about this, the newly vulnerable learner as a consequence of Covid. And it's an area I think we really do need to give very clear thought to. Because in some ways, and we talked through a scenario whereby some children who have experienced potentially deprivation and challenge in their life will have built up some resilience to those challenges that they experience. Children who have become newly vulnerable through the Covid pandemic might not yet have had that resilience kind of created within them. And I think that's something which we have to be really, really cautious of. So yes, there will be people with new vulnerabilities, but also they will be understanding how they respond to that vulnerability as well. Our schools are looking and supporting our children on a child by child basis. I think one of the things I've reflected upon as I've gone around a significant number of our primary schools is that there hasn't been a common answer in terms of which groups of children are struggling. And I think that's really positive in one way because that illustrates that the schools are working on a child by child basis to make sure they understand what those children need. And certainly through the monies which are being afforded to us by the Welsh Government, through things like the Recruit, Recover, Raise Standards funding, we'll continue to do that on a child by child basis. And your second point around staff is equally valid. You know, we know that staff have been concerned about the return to school. We know that staff have been, or some staff, I should say, have been concerned about the return to school. People have vulnerable family members, expecting people to come into the school setting is a big ask at times. And I think the whole period of the last year whereby guidance was changing, we saw shifting patterns in terms of infections and the consequence of those infections, put our leaders under significant pressure as well in terms of how they supported their staff. We did put in place measures to do that. And I think I referred to in the Chief Officers' Report, we recruited a former, very longstanding head teacher to act as a touch point for our leaders so that they had somebody who would have experienced those things as a school leader and would be able to help them and support them. And certainly, my kind of aim throughout the pandemic has been to support our schools to make the right decisions for them, their learners and their context locally. But when they need the local authority to provide more definitive positions that secure wellbeing and so on, we've also done that for them as well. So you're absolutely right, the staff have experienced a very challenging year as well as our learners. Thank you.
Moving on then, we've got Councillor Easton.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. Good afternoon, Will. Last year was a very, very challenging year for the education service, no doubt about that. And it must be in a very steep learning curve.
You've gone mute, sorry, Tony.
Muteing me? Somebody's muting me. I don't know what it was. It was a very challenging year leading up to September, October, when we had further infections. What my question is really is about the children who go from primary school to secondary school. You must have had lots of difficulties, well, I noticed them with the children in the area, that some could go. I muted again, Chair. I don't know what's happening there, but I'll try and get to the point. Children transitioning from primary school to secondary school. We must have learned a lot. And did you learn enough that we will get it better this year? I'm assuming it didn't get bad last year, but we have a hell of a lot to learn. Is this year any easier for the transition between primary school and secondary school? That's a big jump for youngsters. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, Chair. Thank you. Thank you, Councillor Easton. I think that's, and particularly at this time of year, because ordinarily, our schools would have been seeing their children come from year six, they'd have been doing visits to the school so they'd understand how the buildings work, who their teachers might be, who might be in their classes and so on, in a very kind of practical, kind of face-to-face way. But last year and this year, the majority of our schools have chosen to do that on a virtual basis. But I do think the schools learnt a huge amount last year. And I think we've seen outreach projects from the secondary schools into the primary so that they've all done the same type of activity. We've seen open evenings, we've seen virtual tours of buildings, and they have really used that technology to a really positive extent. How far it actually bridges that gap of the experience of going up to the new school to experience it? I'm not sure that we can say at the moment. But I do know that the schools have proven to be hugely innovative in the way that they've approached transition. It is an area that we will focus on with the schools. So those children in year seven this year and those children who move on to year eight as well, we will work closely with them because obviously they will have missed some key parts of their face-to-face education as they come to the end of their primary careers and they think about, you know, the skill sets that they should have developed and where they should be. They will be a key group of focus. And as we've worked with Welsh Government, transitional year groups have been a fundamental part of that. And I think I'd also stretch that beyond those who move from primary to secondary, but also those learners who transition between key stages, particularly at primary level. So those children who go from the foundation phase, which is a highly engaged, play-based learning environment, into a key stage two environment. Now, I know many of our schools have really tempered what that transition looks like. But it still can be quite a step change for those learners. So we're working very closely with those learners who will now be in years potentially three and four as well. So yeah, it's a really good question and one that schools have really responded to positively in.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Will. Moving on to Councillor Edgell. Ruth.
Thank you, Chair. Hello, Will. Good to see you. You've obviously been working very, very hard and we do appreciate your good and comprehensive report. We all tend to think of children being vulnerable, but also I've got grandchildren in the schools in the county. They can be very resilient. And I've got one going to a comprehensive school, but she's got a sibling already there. So she wasn't overly concerned about the step from one school to the other. But my concern was also, I don't know if there's a system there where children don't always sort of show their feelings and their worries at school. And they might be fine themselves, but they might be concerned about a parent who was very anxious because of Covid. Is there any system that, you know, that, it's very difficult then perhaps to approach the adult who says they're fine, but it's manifesting a worry to the child that isn't always showing it at school, but that the parents themselves are very anxious and worried about it? Is there any system that they can have some sort of help or so on?
So I think that's where our support that we engage through the community, through our services like the youth service are hugely valuable. Because sometimes children will want to talk to people maybe not in school settings and they might be more comfortable not directly talking to their schoolteachers. Now, that's in no way, in any sense, a critique of the schools who have all built up excellent pastoral support. And I think we've seen that really develop. And I think the slide that I showed earlier, which shows that very, very clear kind of graduated response for children and people. There are a whole plethora of different points in which children can access that support. It's about us making that very clear to our children and young people that there are adults that they can speak to and that they can raise those concerns with. And clearly, I think one of the aspects of Covid which is important to think through is that it doesn't have a singular impact on people. The family is hugely significant to all of our learners. And actually, you know, how it impacts on the family, and you mentioned earlier the different ways that people have had to work through Covid, will have had an impact on families and learners. So I think schools are aware of that. I think they're aware of it and they really engage with the children very well to actually try and elicit those kind of concerns when they exist. And it's, those concerns will probably actually demonstrate themselves in a range of different ways, whether it's attentiveness in class, you know, the way children behaving, shifting friendship groups, response to some challenges. Those are the types of things that will alert teachers and support staff in schools to whether there's something the children need to talk to them about. And they'll do that in a really supportive and appropriate manner.
Thank you very much indeed, Will, because some parents are coping far better and have far better resources to help their children. And you don't want any of the children to feel that they're carrying the burden themselves. Thank you very much, Will.
Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Councillor Tude Thomas. You're on mute, sorry, Tude.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I had problems with me. Well, thanks for the report. Obviously, you've heard this in CYP as a committee. And obviously, thanks to all the staff, as you rightly said, and see that as a governor. Question and concern that I have is, you know, what strategies are schools using to help children from lower income families and in reality, lower resourced families in terms of skills and aptitudes of their parents? If you come from a financially secure background with parents who are, have been through the system, know the system, they've probably been able to help their children far more than families that don't have that backup. And I'm really concerned that with this sort of bonanza of money from Welsh Government, obviously unfortunately because of Covid, personally, I wouldn't want to see that being spent on, as it were, the wrong things. I want to see children who are disadvantaged. And I've slipped back further, and if you look at the England and Wales stats, children in those backgrounds obviously have probably suffered more. And certainly, the head of Monmouth Comp in one of our meetings raised this issue, I think it was CYP Finance. And he raised this concern and I very much agreed with him. So I, you know, I want some reassurance on that front. The other thing I'd raise is, from being on corporate parenting, it's almost a reverse thing really, but many anxious children who perhaps go to school and sometimes are not happy in school with their peer group, et cetera. They've actually, their learning has improved because they have got the anxiety of going on the school bus and possibly being shoved or bullied, et cetera. And they've been quite happy with online learning. And it's, not that I'm saying that children should not go to school, but it's been a sort of a reverse benefit. And I just touched on that, but key thing is children from lower income deprived backgrounds. Thanks.
Okay, Chair. Thank you. Thank you, Councillor Thomas. I think, I think hopefully in a couple of my earlier answers, I've alluded to some of the things that we'll be doing. So ordinarily, we are. So ordinarily, we are, we work very closely with our colleagues in the EAS to plot and understand where schools are spending their resources. So grant funding such as the Pupil Development Grant, which is money schools receive to support their children who are eligible for free school meals. You know, there is a very sharp focus on making sure that that money is spent on interventions and support for those learners that will make the most significant difference. And again, I think the work that will start in the autumn term through myself and Nikki Wellington, who's our school's finance manager, but with also the Cabinet members for children, people and resources. It will be really understanding the plans that are in place in those schools to spend that money in the most impactful way. And I think I'd also link back to Councillor Grokett's question because I think we will see children emerge as a consequence of the pandemic who on first look, you know, they might come from a family whereby, you know, both parents are employed, that there was kind of accessibility to the internet and so on. But actually, because both parents have been employed and, and active throughout the pandemic, might not have had the time to support those learners in the same way. So I think we need to, to be really clear about which children need the greatest support, how do we know that? What support is going in there? What evidence is there that that support will be effective? And then we have to, at some point in the future, understand the impact that those interventions have made. So I think it will be a really substantive part of the work that, that I undertake, that Sharon Randall Smith does. And we do in partnership with our, our now called School Improvement Partners, or formerly Challenge Advisors, who work directly with the schools. So I think that has to be a key focus for us in the coming year.
Thank you Will. Moving on then to Councillor Petrucci.
Thank you Chair and thank you Will and I would add my thanks to all the staff and yourself and, and all the teachers who've done a tremendous job during the pandemic. My question relates unsurprisingly to performance of FSM pupils and links to Tudor's point and I noticed you didn't answer that we had a strategy, that we're going to be working on a strategy. Which worries me because we, before the pandemic, Monmouth County Council wasn't delivering for free school meals pupils. We had the biggest gap, or one of the biggest gaps in Wales for at least four years of when we could do comparative analysis of it. And now we have a pandemic by any national measure suggests that inequalities have not only have been exacerbated, but now they could be entrenched forever, generationally. So that's come from the IFS, Sutton's Trust, you name it, that is the national picture. Now, that might be different in Monmouthshire, you don't know and I don't know. But I'm worried that we haven't got a full strategy yet or even a kind of firm plan when we already had this problem, Will. It's a particularly Monmouthshire problem of gross inequality and it's either a consequence, you can argue it's a consequence and seen in schools, or the school system just highlights the structural inequalities in our society. Either way, we are not great in this area and I just, you mentioned it there briefly, which does give me some level of reassurance that obviously access to the right equipment, access to learning time was dramatically dropped, no one's fault, it was the pandemic. We know that some of the schools are better than others, responded to blended learning. That is for you and for your staff to deal with at appropriate time. I'm more concerned about the future and when will we see this strategy? When will we see concrete plans, action points to try and address this? Now, I'm not naive to say we can address inequality in a year or this one strategy will do that. But it was already an issue, Will, and now this pandemic has just made it even worse.
Okay, thank you Councillor Petrucci. So I think one of the things which I I included in the report was how we've engaged with members over the last year. And it looks like it might have been remiss of me, but we have taken our draft FSM strategy to CYP. So that has been partied to a discussion at Children and People Select Committee. And we will continue to develop that and I think we need to take the learning of this kind of significant change and you're exactly right in terms of what the research is currently suggesting could be the impact of the pandemic. We've also seen significant increases in the number of children eligible for free school meals. And I think we cite that, or I cite that in the report. So it had risen by probably 200 or 300 children in the course of the pandemic. The number of children eligible for free school meals across our schools. So that strategy is in draft format. Sharon continues to work with colleagues. We'll be working very closely with the EAS in terms of their vulnerable learners team to understand the, the key interventions and the benefits of those interventions. And I would be expecting that final strategy with associated plans to come back through to CYP and then into the formal policy arena in the autumn term this year.
Chair, may I ask a follow-up question or?
Yeah, you can, please do.
That's brilliant, good to see you and thank you for being on dates and times and, and I do, I do appreciate that. I know it's not an easy piece of work. To what extent will that be coordinated with the social justice strategy? Is it engaged with that? Is there, obviously there will be natural interlinks. But is that being integrated in part of that strategy or have you spoken to the poverty team? I just want how, just a feel of the coordination of this rather than a siloing. Thanks, thank you Chair.
Yeah, so we work closely with, with Judith and Ryan in terms of that approach and with the team more broadly. And I, I think it has to be seen in that broadest context because you know, schools are able to do a great deal, they're able to support those additional interventions and so on. Throughout the pandemic, we were able to provide equipment, connectivity, devices and so on. And many of the schools have talked about the future continuing that provision of devices and so on for learners. So I think we can expect to see that continue in our schools into the future. So yes, we are having those conversations next week. Actually, we've got a training session for all of our school leaders on the cost of the school day. That's been organised through Jude's team, understanding how we can mitigate different approaches to the mitigation of poverty in schools. So it's a, it is a, an integrated piece. I think there are some things from a very specific school improvement agenda that we need to focus on. But then again, as I said, there is this broader engaged piece, which is about community, about kind of family work, that we also need to reflect into that strategy.
Thank you Will. Councillor Arman Watts.
Yes, thank you Chair. Can you, can you hear and see me all right?
Yeah.
Brilliant. So my question Will is, well, first of all, thanks for your report. It's a really good report and a really good presentation. My question relates to, I guess, the recording of incidents of discrimination within schools. You know, it's on a theme, Will, I've asked you similar questions before. And whilst I appreciate it's been harder to record those, are you any more confident than you were last year and the year before that we're getting better at recording it? And beyond that, as far as the safeguarding issue is concerned, dealing with it, ensuring that governors and parents and teachers are educated about, you know, the appropriate measures that we should have in place. Thank you, thank you Chair.
Thank you Councillor Watts, yeah, and I appreciate the question and I know it's something which we've discussed in the past. And so, you know, the schools, you know, children haven't, in truth, children have been in school for a term out of the last three in terms of the year that we're reflecting on at the moment. So obviously in the last year, recording will have been for the two terms which children were in essence largely out of school problematic. But whilst they're in school, I think Richard and colleagues in the Education Welfare Team of Wales have worked closely with schools to ensure that our reporting mechanisms are effective and appropriate. I think as well, I think we have seen other processes. So I'm responsible for the Prevent aspects of work in Monmouthshire and the Channel Panel. And, you know, we've seen escalation of school-based issues to do with racism and so on escalated to that point. And I think there is a really clear understanding of what happens and the support measures we can put in place to work with schools and measures outside schools that we can put in place. And I think that's been a really positive multi-agency development to help tackle some of these real challenges. And I think it links to an awareness, a greater awareness in many quarters about what happens in our schools. And I'm sure members won't have seen, won't have missed in current days and weeks the reports in England from Ofsted, the Everybody's Invited website, the, the work that Eston will now do in Wales. I think these issues around discrimination, around how we manage diversity, inclusion are on a forefront in terms of school leaders' minds. And I think they're working very hard with their, with their colleagues and with us to make sure that we respond appropriately at all points to, to any, any instances that occur.
Thank you Chair, I, I just wanted to make one very, very quick final point through you Chair. Obviously, we've seen a huge or significant migration of people coming into Monmouthshire over the last certainly five years. And would Will accept then that we've become more ethnically diverse since that point? And does he believe, sorry if I'm asking a question, does he effectively believe that we, we're kind of catching up with that?
Will.
I, I think it'd be really interesting to, I don't have the numbers to hand immediately, Arman, to understand. You know, we can provide those to you obviously after the meeting in terms of the number of children and so on. I think our work regionally has really helped in terms of the GM's work, which supports children. You know, I guess as a determining factor, children with English as an additional language. I think we've worked really well on some of the specific schemes and I know that's much more specific than the migration you're referring to. But the work we've done with our Syrian learners and so on has been kind of exemplary, I think, in terms of supporting them. So I think, I think actually I'd probably suggest that practice across all of Wales' education settings is improving and catching up with, with where it needs to be. It's an area you can never take your eye off and it's an area that we will continue to focus on in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you Will. And now Cabinet Member, Councillor Paul Pabia.
Yeah, thanks Chair. Just on behalf of obviously my Cabinet colleagues and I think the whole council really, just to thank Will for his presentation and, and report, an excellent report. I think he's absolutely right to spotlight and celebrate the incredible work that our teachers and school ancillary staff have, have done over the last year. But we should also, again, celebrate and spotlight the work that our Children and Young People's Department has done as well and the Will's leadership supporting schools through this very, very difficult 15 months. So just to, just to say, well, thanks very much. And I know my, obviously my predecessor, the leader, Councillor John will, will echo that as well because he's obviously here for the, for the majority of that, of that period. So just a thank you.
Thanks very much.
Will, thank you very much on behalf of the committee, to you and your colleagues for fantastic report. And also thank you very much for answering the questions I give out. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, members, we'll move on to 5.2 on the agenda. Just for information, it's 5B in the Agenda Pack, page 31, which is Shire Hall Monmouth Museum, which I believe Cabinet Member Lisa Dimmitt will take in. Lisa.
Thank you Chair. The proposals to move the museum to Shire Hall are in feasibility stage, but would provide an opportunity to extend the overall offer whilst also enhancing the cultural and heritage story of Monmouth and surrounding areas. This phased project would still ensure the Shire Hall has learning and community and meeting spaces and will continue to be the main town council office. The content of further provision will be developed through a process of full public engagement by the heritage team. There have been alternative buildings put forward by residents for the museum, but these are not within Monmouthshire County Council's ownership. They are 20 Mono Street. Sorry, I was just reading, I've got a headache, let me try and put a light on, sorry. Is that a bit better?
Thank you Lisa.
They are 20 Mono Street, which is a derelict listed building in private ownership and Great Castle House, which houses the Monmouthshire Royal Engineers. This is a really exciting opportunity for Shire Hall, which has seen a decline in visitors over the years. And we're offering unique visitor experience and the study supports the building suitable for museum. And works can be undertaken whilst respecting the building's history and listing. So I hope members will agree to approve this report today. Lastly, can I thank Matthew Lewis, Tracy Thomas and Ian Saunders and all their hard work on this report? I know Matthew is here to answer questions today.
Thank you very much Lisa, thank you. Matthew, are you with us?
I, I am, thank you very much.
We'll go to the first race hand, which is Councillor Richard Roden.
Thank you Chair and thanks for bringing this item proposal forward. I'm fully in support of it as a Monmouth Town Councillor and County Councillor. However, the town loses a valuable tourist asset until the Nelson Collection becomes available at the Shire Hall. And also the town council can't physically meet until the building becomes available again. So you may ask, what's the estimated time before the facility would be available? Assuming that Covid restrictions are lifted in the near future. Thank you.
Matt.
Thank you Councillor Roden. We are working on that at the moment, but our current intent is to get to the stage where we can reopen Shire Hall probably by the start of the, of the summer holidays. And hope to have in place there a initial visitor offer and slowly expand that as, as we can. So we are very clear that, you know, we do need to have a visitor offer that's in place, particularly for the main, for the main summer season. So we're not quite at a stage yet, we can be absolutely firm on that. But I think we'll be able to give you some very fixed time tables probably in the next week or so.
Excellent, okay, thank you very much for that. Thank you Chair.
Richard. Councillor Petrucci, Dimitri.
Thank you Chair. Matthew, I'm Cabinet Member. Is this, I, I've read the paperwork and forgive me, I've been here too long. So I know how many feasibilities we've had on, on Shire Hall and our cultural offer and our museums. Is this new? Or is this part of the work that's been going on for years? I just, I couldn't quite get it from the, from the paper. And if it is new, why, why particularly Monmouth? Is it because there's a pressing, pressing issue in that, in the area or I've just, I've just, it's not really clear why we've focused on Shire Hall, is because the museum has, it has a pressing issue with the museum?
Matt.
Thanks, yes, it is, it is new. And it's, we commissioned a external, well, a partnership led by a firm of London architects to carry out this feasibility study. So it's, it's an intelligent piece of work that has looked at the building and, and built off some of the consultants that were involved in the original feasibility as well to, to inform it. The focus on Monmouth was, was, I think, set out in the, in the, in individual Cabinet Member back last December, which was essentially the business position in terms of Shire Hall and, and the particular circumstances around Monmouth Museum, which we acknowledge, you know, the visitor offer in Monmouth Museum is the least developed of the, of the three museums and in, and in need of further investment. And that, and that's been acknowledged right back to the original museum forward plan, which was produced what, five, five plus years ago, which, which talked around a re-provision of, of Monmouth Museum. So it's an opportunity to, to really align the two, the two things and to look at the assets. And to look at drawing those together into what we believe would be a, a, a really good cultural offer within, within Shire Hall itself. I should say the feasibility study has also looked at museum storage more generally. Partly because Shire Hall isn't the suitable location for, for the level of museum storage that takes place currently in Market Hall. And also that again, that certain knowledge problem was identified in the museum forward plan. So there are, as a sub-part of the feasibility study, there's some wider proposals there looking at storage right across all of the museums and I think we committed storage right across all of the museums. And I think we committed in a report that will come forward and present those as those developing to sort of clear proposals into future meetings.
Chair, may I come back with two technical questions?
You may.
Thank you, Matthew, for that. So two questions then, and I appreciate you might not be able to answer them off the cuff now. How much have we spent on private consultants redrawing Monmouth Shire Hall? Because we've spent a significant amount many years ago, and I think we did it twice. So this will be the third, to my recollection, I could be wrong on that, but at least two, possibly the third. So if you could give me that overall figure, I'd be very grateful. And secondly, I can see you're trying to lever in levelling up funding. Have I read that correctly in the prospectus? Quarter of a million pounds? I think I read that. Forgive me, I don't have it open in front of me right this second, but I think it's quarter of a million pounds. I'm not totally aware of how levelling funding works. I should be more aware of that. But is, I presume it's a finite financial sum from the UK government. To what, for Monmouthshire, to what extent that quarter of a million takes up Monmouthshire's allocation?
Okay, I can't give you the answer to the first part of your question fully, because I'm not aware of what was spent on the original re-provisionment. The spend to date on feasibility work on this stage has been quite modest. I think we're around the £25,000 mark in terms of the feasibility study that's been done. In terms of levelling up, the £250,000 has been asked for in this report from capital receipts would be used as match funding for the levelling up bid if that was successful. And Shire Hall forms part of the much wider levelling up bid that the council submitted, which I believe is in the order of £13 million in total, which sits alongside the levelling up bid that was submitted for Caldercar as well, which I believe is in the order of £20 million.
Thank you, Matthew. Councillor Tony Eason. Tony.
Thank you, Chair. Monlife is in its, I won't say it's in its infancy, but it is fairly new in terms of years. When will you be bringing further proposals to the council about the whole of your attractions across Monmouthshire? You've got Castle One, Tindall Station, lots of small areas which will need, obviously, some funding. Do you have an overall package and plan for that as yet?
We are working, so thank you, councillor Eason, we're working on a a Monlife Heritage Strategy, which is supported by grant aid from the National Lottery Heritage Fund. And that's due for completion towards the end of this year. So that strategy is looking at all of our heritage sites, both the built sites, as you say, like Connygough Castle, the museums, but also looking at the heritage countryside sites, so sites like the Guyan works, Angiddic, Furness, et cetera. So that we've had support from the Heritage Lottery to do that piece of work. And the aim is that that will then develop an action plan. So I believe that we're in a, well, we are in the process of doing that. And the plan would be to have some member workshop and input into that. Once we get to that, at the moment, we've just been doing some work with staff around and communities around audiences. And then we're moving on to the, to the, to the action planning stage. We have a project officer who's supporting us and doing that, Ruth Coulthard.
Okay. Can I come back with further comment, Chair? It refers to Dimitri's comments about the levelling up fund. I believe the bids add to being our first levelling up fund across Monmouthshire in two tranches. One for the Newport East type area, considerably part of Monmouthshire and Monmouth, bit of Monmouthshire. I believe it's around about £20 million. I just wondered if the Cabinet Member, who may be responsible, I don't know which one it is, could give us an update on where we are with that to this meeting today?
I'd like to step in there, Tony, if I may. I think we're going off piece a little bit with the-
A little bit, I agree, yes.
Yeah, I think if we bring it back down to this, I think that would be a conversation to have again in the future, maybe.
Yeah, just thinking about the levelling up fund was related to Monmouth then, really, but I always think of it in Northern. That's fine, no problem.
Well, it might just take a little bit further than we need to at this stage.
You know me.
That's right. No, thank you, Tony. Thank you, Matthew. So, members, we've got the recommendations before us on page 31, recommendations 2.1 to 2.5. Councillor Dimmock, can I take it that you moved those?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I've moved to a window now so you can see me.
Excellent. And do we have a second for those, please?
Oh, second, no, Chair.
Thank you very much. So we'll move to the vote, which is coming in the chat bar. So for those recommendations on page 31, you can vote now, members, please. Members, thank you very much. We've got 28 votes in, 29 votes in, all in favour. So that's carried. Thank you very much. Which means we can move on to agenda item 5.3, which is at page 53 of the Agenda Pack, Climate Emergency Strategy Update. Cabinet Member Jane Pratt.
Thank you very much, Chairman. And the climate strategy update sets out the progress we have made since our declaration of a climate emergency in 2019 to be net zero by 2030. The action plan that sits beneath the strategy is a live working document so that it can be adjusted as new technologies advance and new opportunities become available. Every one of us, as Monmouthshire residents, has a responsibility to do our bit. For whilst we can have our own objectives across our MCC estate, real change will only be achieved when emissions are lowered in every household and business across the county. And we have to lead and be that catalyst for that change. When I took over this portfolio just two years ago, there was no budget as such, and we had to start by looking for the quick wins. Since then, we have made rapid progress, especially this year, following the £626,000 circular economy funding we received, which we have used to set up exciting initiatives in our communities, including the Library of Things, which amongst other things, can even provide equipment for families to go camping, weatherproof gear that they might otherwise not be able to afford, so that they can have a break in the countryside. And for electric cargo bikes, they're also available to hire. We have repair cafes so that we can fix electrical items instead of throwing them out and buying new. We have recently opened a reuse shop at Five Lanes. All this has been achieved with the backdrop of Covid-19. I would like to thank all officers involved for their relentless commitment to this agenda and the leadership they have provided, which has enabled us to achieve so much. We are also indebted to the members of our cross-party climate change group and our climate champions who give up their time to contribute to our response to this emergency and hold us to account. Their involvement meant that we were quickly able to respond when the circular economy fund became available and spring into action with all the exciting community projects that have resulted. I would also like to thank councillor Woodhouse and the members of Stronger Community Select Committee that scrutinised this report last week and provided us with valuable feedback. However, we are far from complacent, and we would have liked to have achieved more. In many cases, we are waiting for the technology to catch up. For example, there is not currently a waste collection vehicle that can cope with the mileage our crews do in our rural wards, despite Debbie Jackson keeping ahead of the game and testing a number of vehicles. Be assured that as soon as this situation changes, Debbie will be getting that vehicle without delay. We will be reviewing our plan carefully between now and our next update in November as we recognise that we need to have a closer measurement of our carbon actions. And in order to achieve this, we may need more targeted professional input in this technical area. Our team are keeping on top of any advancements, and officers have held a number of meetings with Oxfordshire, where the council are the most advanced on providing EV charging points outside homes in the street. And we are in conversation with these leaders in technology in the UK, finding out how we can use this technology and methods on our streets in Monmouthshire. Our new approach to procurement through our partnership with Cardiff City Council will put decarbonisation and the climate change emergency at the heart of our outsourcing decisions. I welcome the importance now being put on this agenda by Welsh Government in their Plan for Government. But we need to see more detail from them as time is not on our side and 2030 is fast approaching. I am happy to take any questions on this report, Chairman. Many thanks.
Thank you very much, Jane. If any members have any questions, please raise your hand in the chat bar. Councillor Tony Eason.
Thank you once again, Chair. Thank you, Jane, for your report. I'm not criticising the grassland management plan, but I would like to see more of a plan to increase visibility at road junctions. This seems to be a problem which the Nomo May has created. Could you look at this in the future, that we can make sure that our junctions are safe? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, councillor Eason. That's for that very valid point, if I may respond, Chair, if that's okay. And certainly, I know that Nigel Lee Worthy did put out a press release last week, which actually set out our strategy regarding, you know, making sure that these areas were safe. But point taken, councillor Eason, and I'm sure that, you know, that will be fed back to the team.
Thank you, Jane. Councillor, thank you. Councillor Martin Grokert.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, it's a great honour to be part of the cross-party group that serves on this committee under Jane's chairmanship. And I would like to add thanks to the main officer in that committee, Hazel Clattworthy, who's doing a tremendous job, not only in keeping us members on the straight and narrow, but also in the breadth of expertise that she's been able to bring in and the contacts and the web of contacts that are developing as a result of that. My question really is, are we actually acknowledging there is a climate emergency when our leading officer is part-time? To me, a crisis and an emergency needs a full-time response.
Jane.
Thank you very much for that question, and thank you for the comments, the positive comments that you've made there, councillor Grokert. I totally agree with you. And in fact, this is being addressed. And it is my understanding, and I don't know whether Frances O'Brien is on the, on the call at the meeting this afternoon. It is my understanding that we are looking for some further support for this department. Because as, you know, it's rightly been said, it's just incredible, really, what Hazel has achieved in a part-time post. And this area is going to be growing in importance as we move forward, as we can see by the importance being put on it by Welsh Government in its super ministry. So yes, definitely, we have looked at this, and we are going to have more, you know, support in that department. But a point very well made.
Thank you, Jane.
That's great. Thanks.
Councillor Tudor Thomas.
Okay, thanks. And thanks, councillor Pratt, for, you know, a very comprehensive report and the fact that we are making some progress. I note your point about the sort of heavy refuse lorries not having the sort of capability to travel on one charge if they were electric. But looking at the infographic, you know, it says seven electric vehicles have been bought. You know, the only ones that I've actually seen recently are the Meals on Wheels, the smaller vans. But can we move generally in terms of the smaller trucks, the vans that need to sort of move about the county? Can we make sort of faster progress there to go into electric? As sort of, let's say, Amazon is shot now, they're doing practically all the new vans are electric. Because they are obviously major polluters in the countryside. So I'd like to make that point. Thanks.
Thank you. Can I respond, Chair? Thank you very much, councillor Thomas, and you raised a very important point. The fact of the matter is that obviously, you know, we have been able to purchase a number of vehicles, and that is listed in the report. But we also need to have the capacity to charge these vehicles up. And we have done a complete review of our fleet. And we have to get prepared by making sure that we've got the capacity at our depots to actually charge these vehicles. So, you know, in the future, it is planned that we will have a new depot south of the county, which will enable us, it will be, you know, concentrated on electrical vehicle charging, so that we do have the capacity to charge these vehicles, you know, overnight or when we need to. I hope that answers your question.
Councillor Edwards, Ruth Edwards. Ruth.
Thank you, Chair. Hi, Jane, again. Thank you for the report. It's the thing that was raised by councillor Eason about visibility. Obviously, we understand the verges are cut only once now a year. We can all understand the reasoning for that. But here, in a very rural part of Monmouthshire, we've got a lot of large, when the grass is long, heavy tractors, silage and haymaking, a lot of big industry going on day to day. And we've got minibus is travelling in these lanes out here. And the grass is so long onto the road, people tend to keep away from the verges because of the grass. So I would implore perhaps a review of some of the priorities that they place on where they cut the verges. Because the B4233 is a very windy road through Monmouth, through the Hendra, and the grass is impinging a great deal onto the road. More through safety reasons, I should think, they should take up their priorities and where the grass is cut once a year. Thank you, Jane.
Jane.
Thank you very much, councillor Edwards. And clearly, this has been an issue, and it has been, it was raised repeatedly at last week's Stronger Community Select Committee. I mean, primarily, clearly, we want to encourage the pollinating plants, and that has happened in the wildflowers. But we need to make sure that our roads are safe. So those points are being taken on board by the teams. I think, you know, over the last few weeks, there's been massive growth. I know where I live, at the top of Clinethley Hill, it's just incredible how everything has suddenly shot up in the last two weeks. And we only have, you know, limited resources. We can't get round the whole county straight away. But if you have a particular problem in a particular area, then please, I implore upon any of the councillors to actually let us know where there's a particular issue. And I'm sure the team under Nigel Lee Worthy will do the best to respond.
Well, the main concern is that we've got milk tankers up here, and we've got schoolchildren in these minibus. You know, it's a conflict of time of day as well as the busy traffic on the road. Thank you, Jane, ever so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Petrucci, Dimitri.
Thank you, Chair. I just want in my own head to understand the Cabinet Member's position, indeed the Conservative Cabinet's position on new roads. I saw last week councillor Fox and Fox MS, as well as the Welsh Conservatives, take a line against the moratorium on building new roads. And I saw in the local press, the local Conservatives pressing for a Chepstow bypass. Perfectly legitimate argument to make. But there seems to me there's a disconnect between the climate change strategy and that stated political position. Can she confirm she is for new roads? And if she is, how does that impact the climate change strategy? And does she know the effect on carbon emissions of the road she is for and so on the Cabinet? Thank you.
Jane.
Thank you very much for the question, councillor Petrucci. I think what we've said in the report is that we need to get much better this year at actually measuring our carbon and our emissions. And once we have that information, then I can, I think we can make, you know, the proper decisions on where we put roads and where we have them. Clearly, you know, we've got terrible issues with pollution across the county, especially in Chepstow. And, you know, in an instance like that, I would quite frankly support the future consideration of a Chepstow bypass because the pollution is so bad. So I think in cases like that, where we can demonstrate that we are actually going to improve in other ways. And we also need to have hubs, not just roads. We need to think about hubs where people can cycle, where they can catch trains, where they can, you know, park the car and get a bus. park the car and get a bus. It's going to be a combination of factors. So, you know, I think that there's a lot to take into account as far as road building is concerned. That particular aspect is not featured in this climate change paper that has been presented today. But I would support, to answer his question, I would support a new road where we could demonstrate that the benefits in reducing pollution and improving the life of the local residents, like we've got in Chepstow, could be demonstrated.
Can I come back on a technical question quickly?
Yes.
I appreciate the cabinet member's candidacy and honesty about her position on building new roads in Monmasshire. Could I ask her, in relation to the data, which is what she was referring to, of idling traffic versus the increased amounts of traffic? I don't believe, the last time I looked, there's like credible data on that. But if she could inform us of that, that'd be very interesting. And could she commit to informing us of that over the next few months?
Jane.
Thank you very much, councillor Petrucci. And this is again a very valid point. And I know that this has been part of our campaign. We've had a lot of communication on this and even at our waste facilities, if you go in there, it tells you to turn your engine off. So I'd be very happy to find that information out for him. And, you know, that will obviously be in action of this meeting today.
Thank you very much, Jane. Moving on to councillor Joe Watkins. Joe.
Thank you very much, Chair. I note from the infographic, it says that 52 members and officers attended the carbon literacy training. I was one of them, along with Martin and Maureen, and we had a really fascinating number of sessions. Obviously, 52 doesn't include all members or all officers. So is it possible that this carbon literacy training is going to be rolled out again? One of the things I found particularly useful was the fact that we were working with other members from other local authorities as well. And so it allowed for a really interesting conversation about how different local authorities address similar issues. And I think that would be a really useful thing for us to carry on going forward. Because we're not going to tackle a climatic emergency by only looking at what Monmasshire can do. We're going to need to look at what our neighbours can do and how we can help each other. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Watkins, for this very valid point and well done for taking part in the training. And I know that we were awarded the bronze award and obviously we want to move forward and get the silver and gold now. And that is our plan. And I know Hazel Clappworthy may be on the call this afternoon. There is plans to roll this out to the wider community and obviously make sure that we get our own staff rolled up. So I'll pass over to Hazel, who's got more detailed information on this. Thank you, Hazel.
Hazel.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, councillor Watkins. And it's good to hear positive feedback on the training. The training has been, the feedback has been really, really positive. So we're looking at the moment and we've had prices to do a train the trainer course for a number of council officers to be able to deliver the training ourselves. So that will mean that we can, at a much lower cost per head, we can roll the training out to any officers and members. And also, I'm having conversations with our rural development plan team as well about being able to offer carbon literacy training in the wider community as well. Initially, working with town and community councils and village hall committees, because they all kind of manage buildings and playing fields and green spaces. So that's kind of the next phase is looking at doing the train the trainer so we can do it, increase the number of people in house who've done the training, but also rolling it out in the wider community.
Great to hear. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Armin Watts.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I just wondered, sorry, I'm going back to Dimitri's point. He's kind of stolen my thunder a little bit on the issue of traffic through bypass and the overall sustainability of Chepstow. And I don't want to preempt obviously any discussions about the LDP or what we're going to have later. But I guess my concern is that it was a commitment certainly from the Conservative Party or Peter Fox and the Chepstow Law, whatever, Chepstow, I say that with respect, the Chepstow councillors, to commit themselves so heavily without looking at the data, without looking at the stats, without giving consideration really to where the additional houses are and without retrospectively acknowledging that effectively, you know, the shipyard diet has contributed massively to the traffic. And then effectively the emissions on Hardwick Hill, which are excessive and were excessive, excessively excessive. And then also, I know Jane's probably going to lose the plot on this question, but basically, you know, taking the traffic really away from the High Street, not allowing that flow of traffic really to then continue up Well Street, for that traffic then to escape onto the A466 off to Monmasshire de Borden or any of those routes effectively means that it all goes on the A48. And I wondered really whether or not, so my, these are the points, I'm sure she'll try to address them. But has there been, the other question is, has there really been any lengthy consultation with Gloucestershire? Gloucestershire Highways, the England Highways Agency?
I'm going to step in there, Armin, just very quickly, because Jane's already made it clear that this paper doesn't speak to a bypass. And it's quite evident that your question is around a bypass, around the traffic in Chepstow, to which this paper doesn't speak. So unless the question is specifically relating to this paper.
Well, I find that odd, Chair, if you don't mind me saying so, because you allowed Dimitri to question and bring up the issue and get a response from the cabinet member and she specifically stated, and yet mine's not included. Explain that.
And okay, certainly will, Armin. Jane responded to Dimitri that the bypass was not part of this paper and therefore it didn't need to be answered. So I think for me, as a Chair.
She did answer it, didn't she, Chair?
But for me, I believe that that question has already been answered. So I don't think it needs to come forward at this moment in time.
I think you're just muffling the question. I think there's poor chairmanship. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments. We'll move swiftly on. Councillor Taylor Francis. Taylor, councillor Taylor Francis, please. You're new, Francis, sorry. Francis, I'm going to come back to you. You're with us now.
Apologies, Chair. I seem to, yeah, apologies. Can you hear me okay? I think I've got a slight technical difficulty. Apologies, Chair, for that. Thank you, councillor Pratt, for bringing forward the report. And as other members, you know, obviously, we would wish to commend the progress that's been made to date. I think I just wanted to make a couple of comments and ask a question, if I may, Chair. And that is, I note that we don't have any reference to mega station in there, which would be remiss of me not to mention, as you will know, Chair, or sorry, councillor Pratt will know, that is now absorbed into Welsh Government policy, which I think is a really positive thing. And Monmasshire Council has contributed significantly to bringing that proposal forward. And therefore, I think it would be only right to reflect that in the action plan and subsequent progress potentially. That would be the first thing I wanted to mention. And then the second thing, and I note that there isn't a specific area of activity around this, Chair, but I do think it's a matter which affects many Monmasshire communities. And that is the matter of flooding and flood risk specifically. And my own community experienced a really terrible flood event in December that you are aware of. And one thing I have been very concerned about is the length of time it takes to complete investigations. And that is in principle down to a lack of resourcing. Obviously, we can't answer for all the other agencies that are involved. But from the council's point of view, Chair, I would certainly ask the cabinet member to consider whether that is a matter that ought to be reflected in the, you know, in any revisions, updating of the climate emergency action plan, because it is a matter which has devastated a number of communities and flood risk is a key issue in a number of our communities. That would be the second point I wanted to raise. And the third thing, and, you know, I don't, I don't mean this glibly at all, Chair, but I'd be really interested if there is any evidence that building a new road can actually be carbon neutral. I've certainly, you know, you know, the work I did on the M4 in terms of also its climate impact, which was a key issue for us here. And so I think for me, a focus on this, in this action plan on modal shift, on supporting alternative forms of transport is key. And that, and the last point I wanted to make, Chair, if I may, is that I would really welcome, I think, a little more detail about how our whole council processes are speaking to this climate emergency plan. And, you know, obviously, all progress is good progress. And just as a point of information, and I don't know if you're aware of this, Chair and Jane, but Growing Space have a proposal to plant. Well, in the first instance, I was really surprised that they basically have a nursery in Monmasshire, which is around, you know, planting up to a million trees and using that as an opportunity for work experience, for well-being. And that might be something I could put you in touch with them about, which may be of interest to you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Jane, just in relation to the question on the roads, obviously, we have already been asked a question on roads and you have already answered, in my view, sufficiently on the point that this paper doesn't speak to road building necessarily. And I think it would be remiss of me to shut Armin down and not answer his questions if we allow the conversation now to roll off into that same direction.
Sorry, Chair, just to clarify, I wasn't asking for, I wasn't asking for a response on that. But I just said I would generally be interested if there was any evidence which could be presented at a later date on the carbon neutrality of new road building. I do appreciate your position, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jane.
Thank you very much, councillor Taylor, for those very important points that you've brought. And obviously, you have got my full support as far as mega station is concerned. And we will make sure that it is included in our new, in our plan moving forward between now and obviously we'll be representing it in November. So very much, you know, fully supportive of that. And it's really fantastic news. Secondly, we are putting more resources into our flooding team because we did have all these section 19 reports that had to be completed. And I know that, you know, it was really absolutely terrible what some of your residents had to had to endure during those unprecedented floods. And we have learnt lessons and we are, we did bring in actually extra resources at the time. But we are looking at that at the moment. So that is going to be addressed moving forward. And in the report in the future, we will be looking at climate adaptation and how we can actually, you know, organize ourselves so that we're prepared for events like this. And one of the ways we've done that in Us, for example, is by purchasing some pumps, which, along with the community who've also contributed and that has avoided some situations that, some serious flooding that might otherwise have happened. So climate adaptation and how we react and plan for this and our strategy is going to be very important moving forward. And the other thing that we've done as well, which, you know, I will talk about later on, is we have actually now got a very specialized piece of equipment to actually clear the drains as well. You know, drains that are blocked up don't cause flooding. But obviously, everything, every little action that we can do to try and prevent it in future, we will do. So, you know, I'm really pleased we've got that equipment and we're going to have a proper strategy moving forward in that respect. But thank you for your questions.
Thank you, Jane. Councillor Simon Howarth. Simon.
Yes, thank you, Matt, and good afternoon to you and good afternoon to Jane. I'd just like to ask a few questions, Jane, on reference to the long-term vision we have with the strategy. I know we've got nine years or even less than nine years now to try and bring some of these, this data and this percentage up there. So my first question then is, is reference to our LDP. Are we including anything within the LDP for new bills for, i.e. charging vehicles? Every property within Monmasshire eventually, so we're told, will have to have the facility to charge its vehicle. And it's going to, it's going to be impossible for us as an authority to lay that on reference to, I mean, we've got thousands of vehicles within Monmasshire, how are we going to charge them? So it's going to be down to the individuals to do that. So within the LDP now, same as we talked about and we discussed issues revolving around new bills, 106s and things like that. Should it be that we should start to be incorporating charging points within them properties, them new bills? It's so simple and not very expensive, to be honest with you. Number two, somebody left here today to go back to Windsor in a charged vehicle. They dared use that vehicle yesterday because they didn't know whether they have enough mileage to charge that vehicle to make it home today. So there are massive complications with going to full electric. And everybody knows that. And whether it'll be achievable in the next eight and a half years, nine years, who knows? We'd like everybody to do it, but it ain't going to happen, I don't think. That's my belief and a lot of people out there believe that. My question then revolving around the carbon footprint. A lot of people used to do a journey to their waste site, to their local waste site on a provision of perhaps, say, going down to do their shopping or doing other jobs as well. As it is now, a lot of us have to travel to our waste sites to take items that aren't collectible as a single journey and return, i.e. or you have to plan your weeks different. I followed one of our vehicles last week. The queue behind that vehicle, you can forget about carbon footprint. That was horrendous as they were collecting whatever they were collecting, the recyclers. That was poor. I discussed, and I said in this council many months ago, our bus fleet. We should be the starters in delivering some of these aspirations that everybody seems to have. So why aren't we running electric buses? In Australia, they've been running electric buses for quarter of a century. So when we go out looking for buses, do we look at the price or do we look at what's best deliverable to meet the carbon footprint? And I'd like an answer on that. I wish as well on this journey because it is going to be a really difficult journey. Fly tipping is a major issue within lots of boroughs, lots of wards within Monmasshire. Now, I mean, how are we addressing that? Because at the end of the day, it's all about carbon footprint. We've got to send crews out there to clear all that up. So it's cost neutral for, it should be cost neutral, but it doesn't and it costs us a lot of money. So to actually clear that, it costs us money, but also pollutes what we're trying to not pollute by sending people out to do it. So, you know, I mean, I do have reservations about some guidance that we do have in our direction. And time will tell whether them reservations are coming true or not. Thank you, Jane.
Before I ask Jane to answer this, Simon, would you mind if we reserve that question in relation to electric charging points for the RDLP until the next agenda item? Because I believe there'd be officers there that could respond specifically to that point.
Yeah, I don't have a problem. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you. Jane, can I answer the other points?
Yeah, thank you very much, Chair. The second point is on fast charging points. And yeah, I mean, you've got a very good point there. And I mean, you know, I know a friend of mine who has an electric car. It's very difficult to go from South Wales to North Wales, for example, and, you know, charge the car up. So without going on to the English roads and using the fast charging points that are available there. So I mean, that is, that is really not something that we necessarily at local government level can influence. That's down to central government to make sure that their strategy, and I believe that strategy is in place to improve that, you know, UK-wide. But we can obviously do our bit to make sure that we have those fast charging points here. And Roger Hoggins is carrying out an electric vehicle charging, you know, project, which we've got funding from Welsh Government to do. So he'll be pressing ahead with that over the next couple of months. As far as the carbon footprint at the waste site, obviously, don't need to remind you that most things can be recycled at the curbside, but take the points on what you say. Unfortunately, you know, we do collect various items and there isn't, as I said in my presentation at the start. presentation at the start, although we've looked at vehicles, there isn't one available at the moment that suits our unique circumstances. And as soon as we can get one, we will. We've trialled a number of them. And, you know, some of them just didn't, didn't go the distance. And we don't want to be in a situation where we're having to bring a diesel truck out to pick up an electric vehicle and take it back to Raglan Depot to charge it up as it's run out of juice. So, you know, as soon as there is one that's available, we'll get it. But I don't know whether Debbie Jackson's on the call today. She's an absolute expert on this, but I don't believe there's a bus made at the moment that can seat more than 30 people. There just isn't one available. So, you know, as soon as we can find those vehicles, we will purchase them. But we are waiting for the technology to catch up. It did list in the report what we have purchased, and I'm sure you've read that. And, you know, we have, where we can, we're buying these electric vehicles. But we are reliant upon industry to provide us with, with that equipment so that we can purchase it. The other point, what was the fourth thing? Fly tipping. Yeah, I mean, I think with fly tipping, I mean, it did slightly go up, but not significantly go up during lockdown. And I think what has happened, though, a lot of the fly tipping that is being reported is in fact historic fly tipping. And what we've had is, thank goodness, we've got everybody out in the countryside. People are enjoying, you know, being outside, they're cycling, they're walking and, you know, dog ownership has gone up. It's just fantastic to see people out and about. But they are noticing fly tipping a lot more. And in our own ward, Simon, I actually was taken out to a fly tip last week in Cliddeyt North of 2,000 tyres, which is hidden under the undergrowth, probably one of the biggest fly tips I've ever seen. But it's historic. It goes back 10 years. So a lot of the fly tipping that is being reported now, as more people are out and about, we've got more brilliant people doing, you know, the litter picking, and they're noticing where these fly tips are. So, you know, we have got officers on the case and the law is now with local government and we will prosecute these people at Flightit where we can find evidence of who's done it. But you are right. You know, I think that there's a perception that it has increased, but really, a lot of that, I think, is because it's actually being reported a lot more. And it's fantastic to see our residents really taking a pride in their area. And these people that carry out these antisocial activities are really, you know, finding the wrath of our local communities who are absolutely fed up with it. So I don't know whether you want to come back on any of that, councillor Howard?
No, I'm fine, Jane. Thank you. Thanks, Simon. Thank you, Jane. And Jane, congratulations from me to you, as I believe your department have birthed a 50 kilowatt solar PV power station on the County Hall today, which is going live this afternoon. So well then, congratulations on that. I haven't got any more questions in the chat bar, or any more raised hands, sorry. So I shall ask members to note that we're looking to move the recommendations on page 53, 2.1, 2.2. Jane, can I take it that you moved those?
Yes, of course, Chair.
And do we have a second, please?
I'll take that again, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, so members, that's now in the chat bar to vote on, please. Okay, members, so we're at 30 and 33. So that's, that's passed. So thank you very much, everyone, for that voting. Before we move on to the next agenda item, I'm going to take or call a five-minute comfort break for everyone, because the next agenda item could go on for some time possibly, and the day is yet but young. So, so yeah, so what we'll do, we'll call it now and then we'll come back at two minutes past two. Two minutes past four, sorry. Thank you very much. Nicola, is that okay to turn off the recording at this moment?
The recording will still run.
Okay.
So can everybody keep their microphones and cameras off?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, members. Okay, members, thank you very much for returning. We move on to agenda item 5.4, which is the Monmashia Replacement Local Development Plan Preferred Strategy, which Cabinet Member Sarah Jones will be taking. Sarah?
Thanks, Chair. Yes, I'm presenting the report to council today on behalf of Cabinet Member Bob Greenend. And as you will all be aware, it's a vital document for our council. It's about providing the framework for sustainable and resilient communities, which I know that we all are committed to. And I very much welcome the opportunity to present it to you today. What it is, is our preferred strategy, as you know, and what we're seeking today, very simply, is your endorsement for us to go out to consult on this preferred strategy. Clearly, a fundamental part of our engagement process. I just want to talk through the recommendation. There is one recommendation. There is a slight change to that. The recommendation is that council endorses the Replacement Local Development Plan Preferred Strategy, the statutory consultation engagement and stakeholder involvement for an eight-week period. You'll note that in your report, it says six weeks. That has changed to eight weeks. So we're seeking endorsement for an eight-week consultation period. And Matt has put in the chat bar that correction. The report itself is going to come back to you again. As I say, this today is about seeking your endorsement for consultation. What will come back to you will be the amendments. It'll be listening to that consultation period and bringing the preferred strategy back to you in November this year. Bit of background and repeating maybe what people already know, but I think it's important that we do that. Because we did start this process back in March 2020. Now, clearly, that was a commitment that we'd start then, but unfortunately, the process had to be halted because of Covid. Whilst that was disruptive, it has given us an opportunity to review the issues in light of Covid. So the context within which we're in, an example being Welsh Government commitment for 30% homeworking in the future. That has now been reflected in the document. And also those national frameworks like Building Better Places, a document which has been produced post-Covid. We've also been able to revisit the preferred strategy in the context of new population and household projections, which Welsh Government published last August. So we're progressing now against our revised timetable, and this is where we are today. We're working to this timetable and we're presenting you with the preferred strategy for consultation. As we've mentioned, it's very much about setting our strategic direction for land use in the county, identifying how much growth we need. And whilst I won't list it all, in 3.10 of the cover report, you'll see the objectives of this strategy itself. They won't provide any of the real detailed policies and proposals. As you'll know, that will come forward in the deposit plan. And the timescale is for deposit plan in summer 2022. As I mentioned, there's a number of documents at a national level which guide our approach, but there's also our local commitments. Now, we've just heard about climate emergency, and again, that's been reflected. But also those challenges that are more acute or more unique to Monmashia that we have here in the county. So those have been reflected on within the documents. I think very simply, I'll just quickly run through, you know, how we're going to deliver these sustainable and resilient communities. What are our top-line targets? So it's about making provision for up to just over 8,000 homes. That's new growth area homes for approximately 3,658 houses. We're providing the planning framework to enable the provision of just over 7,000 jobs, which is really important. And linked to that then is around employment land. So we're looking at around a minimum of 43 hectares of employment land. That's land within B1, B2 or B8 use. And importantly, we commit to distributing that growth proportionally across our most sustainable settlements. So within the document, that's those settlements that are the higher-tier settlements. But it's also being cognizant of the fact that we need to look at our rural communities and ensuring that we provide a place for people to live that's affordable for our young people in rural areas. And that's an important point, affordable housing. This document does talk to affordable housing very clearly. It talks through our aims to meet 10% of the LHMA need, the local housing market assessment need. And the element of the strategy will deliver around 5000 homes over on 50/50 sites. But in total, we're looking at around just over 2,500 homes or just under 2,500 homes of affordable housing. There's 18 strategic policies, including affordable housing, which I won't run through, but that's in the report itself, of course. And then in terms of taking this preferred strategy now to consultation, it's, as I said, an eight-week period. That period starts on the 5th of July. It ends on the 31st of August. There are going to be huge different ways in which we're going to try and engage. Clearly, it'll come to scrutiny. There'll be a series of webinars. We're going to be slightly restricted because of Covid restrictions and guidance, but we're going to be getting out and about and meeting people, having drop-in sessions as well as doing things remotely. So a real hybrid approach to consultation, but a very thorough one, I think. Alongside this consultation period, there will also be this second call for candidate sites which goes out. Now, just before I conclude, Chair, just to mention the phosphates issue, because I know everyone's aware of that. And that's one that's a real challenge for us at the moment and one that's causing real difficulties, I know, for both us and for developers in the county. We did consider options appraisal about whether we needed to halt the process because of the phosphates issue. We're not going to do that. We're going to go with options appraisal, one which is to continue. Because we do think we're making good progress on that issue. And we do anticipate that solutions to the phosphates issue, that they're going to be hopefully determined by the deposit stage of the plan. Okay, so just in conclusion, we believe the preferred strategy will provide an appropriate level and spatial distribution of housing and employment growth within our county. It's going to help address both demographic and affordable challenges that we have. It's about building those sustainable and resilient communities. That phrase I keep coming back to. But it's absolutely fundamental to the wellbeing of our current and our future generations. As I say, this is our opportunity now to seek views on our approach and to once again engage our communities on what the future of Monmashia looks like for them. And so I endorse it to you, council, for this to go out to consultation. As I say, for me, this is about endorsing our approach to go out to consultation. I don't want to preempt what's going to come out of that consultation. Clearly, there'll be questions, I know, for us today, but let's be careful not to preempt what is going to be a thorough consultation period. So thank you, Chair. I know that we have Mark and Rachel with us to answer any questions, and I'll come in when needed. But I do just want to hand over, if it's okay, Chair, to Mark, because I think he might want to just address some of the questions I think councillor Howarth raised in the previous session, but which were related to this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Mark?
Thanks, Chair. Good afternoon, members. Yeah, thanks. I thought, given the previous item, it might be beneficial just to talk through how this relates to the climate emergency specifically and answer councillor Howarth's question about EV charging. So I mean, sustainable development's about four legs on the story, at least. It's the social, the economic, the cultural and the environmental. And some of the key outcomes we're seeking to achieve via the development plan and this strategy are around the affordable housing, balancing our demography and building sustainable communities. But we're doing that and we've drafted this with the climate emergency firmly at the forefront of our minds. The key relevance and the key thinking, I think, with the climate emergency for us has been around four areas, really. So, I mean firstly, the relevance is where you build. So looking at sustainable settlements, looking at those places with amenities and infrastructure to reduce the need to travel in the first place. And then with connectivity so that travel can be sustainable. And also flooding was mentioned earlier. So we're looking at an approach that'll be firmed up in the deposit plan. But we're looking at an approach that goes beyond national policy and potentially just avoids identified defended and undefended floodplains in their entirety. Under national policy, you can build things like offices in defended floodplain greenfield sites. We're currently minded to seek to avoid that altogether and have an even more robust approach. That will come out in the deposit plan. The second aspect is the what. So linked into that is how much you build. And that's where we're trying to get these multiple objectives without causing harm. But we also have the policies in detail which will come again in the deposit plan. But we are pushing for and committed to carbon-neutral developments, so looking at how those new homes are built. And then the detailed parts like electric vehicle charging and broadband to reduce the need to travel further. With specific reference to EV charging, we're minded to put that in as a policy in deposit plan. And we've set some of this stuff out in a document to guide people who promote insights, so they know what's going to be expected of them. But building regs, which are devolved in Wales, are already being pushed forward on that front. So the Welsh Government's currently minded to change building regs and will require through that mechanism EV charges on all new dwellings within the next couple of years anyway. But if for some reason that doesn't happen, or we need to do both, we'll have that covered with a policy. Because that is really important to enable people to have that change in behaviour. The third angle is a different one, is a difficult one, and that is around people's behaviours. So we can do things via council activity and via the LDP to enable active travel. But we can't, you know, control people's behaviour in that sense. It's about enabling and encouraging and educating and supporting. And then the fourth area is around what we've currently got. So we can have policies for new builds. But what we can't do is control the huge amount of privately-owned existing housing stock via a planning process. So we'll be looking at different ways as a department outside of the LDP as to how we look at retrofit and encouraging sustainable adaptations to existing homes. But obviously, they're privately owned, so it's down to the owners to understand and want to do those changes and be facilitated to do those changes. So thanks, Chair. I just wanted to set out some quick headlines really on how we've aligned this with the climate emergency because we understand the importance of that. Very briefly, just to conclude, one misconception that's come up in the past is in the objectives that have been set out in the plan and agreed by council in October 2020. The climate emergency is number 17. The reason for the ordering of those objectives is to reflect the Wellbeing of Future Generation Act. So they're not in priority order. It isn't added on as an afterthought or number 17 because it's least important. It's modeled in that way to reflect the Wellbeing of Future Generations Act. And that in turn reflects how national planning policy is set out. So it all kind of flows in a logical way. So thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Mark, for that. Thank you. And we'll go to the chat bar. So the first question we have is from councillor Armon Watts. Armon?
Yes, thank you, councillor Fekins. So my question really is about the broader debate, the consultation and the issues around about housing. So you mentioned there that the target was quite, seemed to be quite ambitious, which is, you know, I'm happy with that. I guess what I'm concerned about, so I'm just kind of commenting, I will come on to my question, Matt, because I know you'd like it all nice and tidy, right? Is basically, is there any scope within the debate about, you know, traditional methods of, you know, building houses, i.e. council houses? You know, there was some debate certainly with councillors. I know Bob Greenend, I think in principle, agreed with. My synopsis was that we were an ever-growing, getting older population. You know, the average working age is 48 in the county. So, you know, 12 years from now, we have a crisis. We do need a lot of additional houses because, you know, we, you know, we're competing with Cardiff and Bristol. And whilst the offer is going to be slightly different, you know, we're appealing to families. I think that was the broader kind of discussion through better education and facilities and so on and so forth. We need to do that. But the difficulty with that is, Chair, is that we don't have the salaries to support the, certainly for, if you like, the indigenous people, our local young people, our school leavers of tomorrow. We don't then command or the local industry doesn't command the salaries that we can then achieve or they can achieve a purchase. So the, I think the national price-to-earnings ratio is probably six times earnings. Well, I think in Chepstow, it's something like seven, eight or possibly nine now, which kind of corresponds with Bristol. I think Kensington and Chelsea is something like 13 or 15. I can't quite remember. But it's about that proportional reach then to, you know, salaries and then obtaining then that goal of house ownership, which I believe in, you know, I do. But that can't necessarily be the same for everybody. And we all, I guess, as older ones, and probably you, Matt, is well part of that generation who've been able to speculate, to accumulate. That's beyond their reach. So I wondered whether or not we were going to effectively tackle this debate by saying to the public, we would consider building council houses. Certainly, we borrowed 50 million quid, albeit that we spent quite a bit of it already. But, you know, the early part of the debate really was around about, as far as our group was concerned, was about investing in homes. And I tell you what's interesting about by investing in homes is the return in council tax, let alone the rent. But the return in council tax is a significant investment in the authority for the longer term. It makes it more sustainable economically. Now, we can have a debate about, you know, what types of homes they are. But for example, I think Caledonia has around about 5,000 homes, Mark. It brings in around about 3 million quid a year. Chepstow has 7,000 homes. It brings in 5 million pounds a year in council revenue. So it's a way of investing in a future and making it financially sustainable as well. Thank you for letting me raise that point without being cut off.
Thank you. Mark?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks, councillor Watts. In terms of what the Replacement Local Development Plan can do, it's looking at land allocations and how much growth and then the policies for affordable housing. It wouldn't set out who builds the homes. But there is a whole separate discussion taking place about whether the council becomes a developer or supports affordable housing in different ways. So I can't comment on that here in terms of this paper. What the LDP is looking at though is certainly prioritising that affordable housing build, ensuring that happens. The minister, one of the appendices to the report, appendix seven, is a letter from the minister or the, I say the then minister, it's still the same minister now, for planning and housing, which is talking about councils putting forward public land for affordable housing-led sites. So we're working with the estates team on that, and that can come through the RLDP process as well. Then it's the other tools we have. So it's the LDP policies, Welsh Government funding and the registered social landlords and their own development activity. So there's a bunch of different tools available to us, including the LDP. But in terms of the very specific question about will we, as an organisation, build houses, that isn't something that the RLDP can control. But it is something that the council's discussing via other forum.
Thank you. Councillor Howard Giles? Giles?
Thanks, Chair. Sorry, you caught me out a little bit. So I was just finishing off a chocolate bar. I've got a brief question. And I think the meeting's got to be long enough, so I don't want to go on about things I've mentioned before. But I just would like to seek some clarity about NDF Future Wales. And in particular, South East Wales region's got a population of 1.53 million. We in Monmashia have about 94,000 residents, which represents about 6.1% of the regional total. For the South East Wales region, Future Wales sets the number of new houses at 66,400. That runs up to the period to the end of 2039 and equates to an average provision of 3,688 homes per year. Our draft preferred strategy, including the flexibility allowance, proposes 8,366 homes in the 10 years up to 2033. So that works out at 836 per year. What the Office of Recommendations mean is that Monmashia would propose to deliver over 22%, or nearly a quarter of the annual housing requirement for the whole region in those first 10 years. Yet we only have 6% of the regional population. Not only that, but we're not in a national growth area. That might suggest that to be in compliance with the national plan and therefore on the way to producing a sound LDP, that we should be looking to provide less than 6% of the regional total, which would reflect our population and non-growth area status. And regardless of any arguments about the right growth options, because my question isn't about that. And I respect that members will have entirely different views about the LDP and the right direction. I am concerned that there's a really significant variance between Future Wales and the direction proposed by the draft, for which Welsh Government will likely require robust evidence well beyond aspirational talk. So firstly, are officers confident that their recommendations to members and the public are realistic? Secondly, can they advise how they intend to provide such evidence to the Welsh Government? And if there have been any recent discussions with Welsh Government about growth levels? Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you. Giles? Mark?
Thanks very much, Chair. Thanks, councillor Howard. Yeah, I accept in the sense that what we're looking at is a higher proportion of sort of the population balance in the way you've said. But the difference in Monmashia is we have a lot more land than many of the counties. So we do have that land use framework to support. I completely accept and agree. We're not a national growth area or a regional growth area as identified in Future Wales 2040. Sorry, just to take a step back to make sure all members are familiar. Future Wales 2040 is now published. It's what we were referring to as National Development Framework. And in a legal sense, it's a development plan. So it isn't policy. It's a proper statutory development plan. And our plan must respect what's in that. It must have general conformity to that plan. I am comfortable with what we're proposing conforms with Future Wales 2040. And one of the appendices to the report, to the council paper, I think it's appendix five, sets out how we think we fare against the test of conformity. Sorry, the tests of soundness, which we have to meet, and conformity with Future Wales 2040. So I won't go through it all in great detail because it's there in black and white. But in terms of tests of soundness, a couple of key ones for us to consider are, and this on page 10, I think, of appendix five. Does our plan address the key issues? And so we're talking about how do we get the affordable housing, change our demography, make our communities sustainable in a social sense and an economic sense. If we don't have a level of growth that's sufficient, then our population is aging and declining. So what impact will that have on those matters? Another test of soundness is, is the planned strategy sufficiently, is it positive and sufficiently aspirational? So the Welsh Government's encouraging us to go for this stuff and ensure we are achieving the outcomes that we want. So I know there'll be disagreements, probably between councillor Howard and myself, about what an appropriate level of growth is. But that is what the Welsh Government's requiring us to do. Sorry, I think it's actually appendix four, not five. In terms of conformity, so page 17 onwards of that same document. Although we're not in a national or regional growth area, the policy does clearly say "development and growth in towns and villages in rural areas should be of appropriate scale and support local aspiration and needs." And then other policies such as policy four and five go on to encourage us to meet our affordable housing needs and look at what we need to do to grow or to build sustainable places, including public sector land use. So yeah, policy four, "policy should consider how age-balanced communities can be achieved, where depopulation should be reversed, and consider the role of new affordable and market housing, employment opportunities, local services and greater mobility in tackling these changes." And policy five goes on about support in the rural economy. So I completely accept the initial point, you know, we're not a national growth area or regional. We do need to address our local needs, and that's what we believe this plan, this strategy will do, which is why we're bringing it to council. I'd also just add that the figures that are referred to are requirements from central estimates of population growth. They aren't targets, and the Welsh Government's clear on that. They're not targets of what we should be aspiring to. It's more like a minimum requirement from the population data. So it's not saying we're caps at that. It's not saying that South East Wales should only achieve that. But it should make provision for that level of growth. Going above that in itself in principle isn't an issue. Clearly, you then got to think about all the other things, you know, climate emergencies and relevant policies on how you achieve them. So thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Mark. Councillor Gruka, Martin?
Thank you, Chair. A couple of points, if I may. The first is to be whimsical about how the nature of Abigavenny is changing. Because I note from this report that growth, as we move forward with this revised plan, if it goes, if it is acceptable, will focus on the towns. And obviously, as an Abigavenny member, that's where I am primarily concerned. It's not that long ago that the biggest employer in Abigavenny was the railway. And most of those jobs would have been working-class jobs. Over time, the biggest employer became the health authority with a balance of working-class, middle-class jobs. Since the last, the current LDP came in, we've seen a large expansion of areas of housing in Abigavenny, virtually all of which have been built by developers looking to create four-bedroomed houses filled with commuters because there aren't sufficient suitable jobs in the town. The town is becoming unbalanced as we go forward in time. And I would like to ask, my first question is, how are we going to try to redress this balance in the type of housing that is available without the council becoming a developer in its own right of the sorts of housing for that local community that used to dominate in the town and where people now have to move out because they can't afford to build, to buy houses in the town? and where people now have to move out because they can't afford to build, to buy houses in the town. And similarly, to create the amount of jobs. If we're going to build the amount of housing that that appears to be suggested in this report, how are we going to get a suitable number of jobs across the board to meet the requirements of all our school leavers? I think I'm probably not alone on this council in having children who've gone successfully through our local schools and have then had to move away because there is not suitable employment for them in Abingavenny or this part of Monmouthshire. So that's my first point. The second is is an ecological point really. And I know I discussed this at the member seminar the other night. But the Welsh Government are now seeing the concept of a green wedge in a slightly different way in planning terms. And it seems to me that the area around the northern boundary of my ward in Abingavenny, where it borders on to the National Park, is an area with iconic views from the town and indeed from miles outside the town looking up towards Sugarloaf and and the Black Mountains. Green wedges would provide a buffer between the growth of the town and those iconic National Park views, which in terms of moving forward and the Wellbeing and Future Generations Act are important considerations. I have been told that there will be a review of green wedge provision and how that will fit into the new LDP as we go forward. I wonder if I could get some idea of when that will be considered? Because if it goes on much longer, it will be too late for it to be considered. And that'll be a great opportunity lost. Thanks Chair.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks Chair. Thanks councillor Grubk. I think there were the three elements there I picked up. So I'll answer in turn. So the first one around sort of the character of Abingavenny and the housing mix. So you refer to private sector bill being sort of predominantly four bed detached, that kind of thing. Yeah, completely agree. That's one of our challenges. So at the moment with the affordable housing provision, we have, you know, complete control over that. We can say to the developers what proportion we need to be, for example, two bed bungalows, three bed semis, according to the housing need in the area. At the moment, there's no policy support around the market housing. So kind of normal planning considerations about, you know, design and amenity. But otherwise, you know, if they're looking at predominantly three or four bed houses, there's no control over that. We'd like to change that in the new plan. And we've looked to have a policy about housing mix so that we do get a proper balance of house types. So the affordable housing will be there to enable people who, you know, qualify for affordable housing, can't get on the market ladder, to remain in the county. And then the smaller homes will be there for those who could get on the market themselves without sort of assistance, but not straight into a four bed detached house. And so need some of the the smaller homes to to come in. So we'd be looking at that. That will come in at the deposit plan stage, but that is a policy approach. And we're certainly looking to push forwards and have started talking to site promoters about. In terms of employment. The, what we're looking to do is create the policy framework that supports our job creation. So again, there's aspects within our control in a planning framework, some broader bits within our control as a as an authority. And then some parts where we're just looking to influence. So the bits we can definitely do from from a RLDP point of view are have a range and choice of sites in the right places. And that's one of the real challenges at the moment, that the sites aren't providing what we need. So Cathfalan and James Woodcock frequently get inquiries from people looking to either remain and expand or move into the county. And we've got a recurring pattern where we can't accommodate those in Abingavenny and Monmouth in particular, where we don't have sufficient sites or sites in the right place. On the flip side, we have quite a lot of employment allocated land in the south of the county that hasn't come forward yet. And I'll come on to that in a moment. And so the 43 hectares that we need just reflects what we call B class uses, so offices, warehouses, industry. As you'll know, a lot of the people who work and live within the county don't work in those environments. So things like shop workers, tourism, agriculture, all of those big sectors, they don't factor into that 43 hectares. So there's other policy tools to look to support those kind of things, you know, for example, the future of high streets. So we'll be looking at that for the the future deposit plan as well. In terms of the workers, I had explained to me some some terms used last week, which which really stuck in my mind and worked really well. So we have what we can describe as anywhere workers, place based workers and on the go workers. So anywhere workers would be described as somebody like me, where you can do the job in an agile fashion. So right now, I mean, you'd probably guess that I'm working from home, but I could be anywhere in the country or or the world potentially with internet. And I'd be able to a large extent do my job from a remote location. So in that regard, the way in which people are living and working in a post-COVID society is changing. A lot of people in those kind of roles are looking to work in an agile or a home basis, at least some of the time. So that can help us with employment needs and and commuting. And place based workers will be people like shop workers, factory workers, you know, receptionist in a hotel. They have to physically be in that place of employment to do their job. And then on the go workers are those who are site based. So, you know, our grounds maintenance team and people like plumbers, electricians, doesn't really matter where their HQ is, they're going around different locations to do work in in a particular spot. So the the employment needs are quite different for those different groups. And the 43 hectares or the the LDP isn't the sole factor for them. So it's also looking at how do we encourage people or enable people to work remotely? Things like community working hubs, broadband provision, if they can, but you know, completely realise that's not every single job in the county by any stretch. The the part that we we don't control via the LDP process, but have some some ability over is things like land acquisition. So we do have other tools in our toolbox that we can look to use. So I quite frequently refer to sites in the south of the county with different ownership that haven't come forwards. It is within our gift to use those powers if we need to to assemble sites and bring them forwards. And so we need to look at those other tools as well in delivery for the for new RLDP. And I think that's one of the things we reflected on in the current plan and a lesson learned that we need to do to do more of. And colleagues are all on board on that on that approach. And then the third question you asked was around the ecology and and green wedges. So yeah, I mean, we live in a in a beautiful, beautiful county, some really fantastic landscapes. And we'll have to make some some potentially tough choices about where we build and where we don't. You know, we don't have any particularly horrendous brownfield sites or horrible bits of land that everyone would be happy to build on. Vast majority of our county has some some great value. But what you have mentioned is correct. The national policy has changed in the last couple of years. So green wedges were previously about preventing the coalescence of villages and villages or towns and villages. Now there's an extra category that allows them as a buffer to national designations like the National Park. So we're one of the, Abingavenny is probably one of the very few areas that that really applies to. So the green wedge review is starting and that will help inform the deposit plan in terms of which sites are actually allocated. At this stage, you'll see in the documents, we are consulting on strategic growth options for each town. So seven sides, Monmouth, Chepstow and Abingavenny. And one of those options is the area that you're talking about councillor Grubk. But I would just stress, it's just an option. We're doing it to start a conversation. We don't need all of them in each town. It could be part of one site, you know, part of A, part of B or none of A, all of B, different combinations. We just wanted to start that conversation. In the previous LDP, it's the current LDP, we didn't do that. We allocated strategic sites or we identified strategic sites rather at this stage, but just one. So for example, in Monmouth, Wannastow Road was put in there as a strategic site and people were asked, did they like it or not? We didn't really want to do that approach this time. We want to ask about options, get communities input onto where their 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 town might best grow and and go from there really. All of the sites will have pros and cons without a doubt. But yeah, just to reassure you, it's very much a starting point. It's, yeah, it's nowhere near too late. And the green wedge review alongside people's consultation responses is, do they like site A, site B or site C for the strategic growth? You know, we'll also be factoring in other evidence, other land uses potentially, other designations. So if everyone says they really like that area, but the report comes back saying, you know, it desperately must be a green wedge and the other sites, you know, not so sensitive in that regard, then, you know, we'll factor that into the decision making, if that makes sense. So I think that's answered the three questions. Hopefully councillor Grubk.
Yep. Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Thank you. Okay, councillor Harris, Roger.
Thank you Chair. Very comprehensive, I mark, that's for sure. But the LDP process certainly brings out the nimbyism in all our members. I don't build it there, build it elsewhere. And we're all at it. If I remember rightly, for the last LDP, there were great debates about the number of houses we should be building. And we started off from a very small number and gradually increased it and then got very happy with ourselves. And then the Welsh inspector came along and said, you've got to be joking. You think you're going to get away with that? Few number of houses. And lo and behold, we were mandated to build a lot more. I have a feeling the same applies now with in the county, there's only got 3% of built area. We've got a lot to play with. And I think these are observations. We keep talking about affordable housing. That's a total misnomer in this in this county. You know, the average price of new build is well over £300,000. That's not affordable to anyone that's down the bottom of the pond. I wish we just keep using the word total housing. That's desperately what we need in the in the county. And the only way that's ever going to happen is if we, as an authority, hand over land that we've got to register total landlords to find the money elsewhere and build the total housing. We mustn't be frightened of of that. And for example, if and when the Welsh school site in my ward in Abingavenny comes away when it moves to Derry View, that's council owned. Wouldn't it be lovely if we could say to Monmouth Housing, here we are, waste some money and build a lot of social housing. As I say, just observation, but we need to keep these things in mind. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Do you want to respond to any of that, Mark?
Yeah, just just very briefly, if I if I could. Yeah, in the previous LDP examination, the current LDP, we did have a requirement for additional housing land at examination. I like to think that won't be the case this time. I think we've got an ambitious target and suitable sites, but you know, never say never. I I'm conscious that I didn't quite answer all of Giles' question earlier when he mentioned about any discussions with the Welsh Government. So it's very early doors in that sense. We have had a meeting with the Welsh Government about Future Wales 2040. They've been to every single authority just to talk through what it means for that authority. And I came away quite reassured in terms of how policies four and five in particular apply to us. So that's kind of coming from the other angle to what Roger was suggesting, which which could be a potential for more, even more land. I think that would only arise if for some reason, some of the sites in the deposit plan were viewed to be not deliverable rather than an extra need. But we'll cross that bridge as we get to it. We have factored in in the figures 10% flexibility. So we'd be allocating sufficient land for 8,600 homes, sorry, 8,366 homes to meet a requirement of 7,600. So there's 10% flexibility in case some sites don't come forward or for some reason deliver less than you'd think. Just briefly, in terms of affordable housing, two things really. First of all, we, when we talk about it, we're talking very strictly the Welsh Government definition. And that causes some confusion sometimes because we're a border county. It's very different system here to in England. The Welsh Government is very clear on what affordable housing means and what it doesn't. And we stick very rigidly to to that. And so it is is three elements, a social rent, intermediate rent, which is a discount on private rental value, and low cost home ownership, which is a reduced price where you're part buying that property. But the way we do that, you would have a mortgage on the part that you buy, so normally between 50 and 80%. But you wouldn't pay rent on the other parts. There's a different system where you pay rent on the bit you don't own. But then you've got a mortgage for part rent on the other part and you basically know better off. So we don't do that approach here in in Monmouthshire. The minister now talks very clearly about social housing. And he is very careful with her language. And that's clearly from the local housing market assessment, our greatest need. But there is that other element of intermediate rent and low cost home ownership. So we're looking at neutral tenure approach to to get that mix. The other thing I just mentioned really briefly, if you've done mine Chair, is in Future Wales 2040, Giles mentioned earlier, the the growth figures that they're talking about. There's also a very ambitious level of affordable housing that the Welsh Government is looking to achieve, which I think is 47 or 48% in South East Wales in the first five years of the plan to be affordable in South East Wales. So that is only going to happen with some very significant public sector investment. And, you know, if we've got the sites that can help support that, we've certainly got the need to deliver it. So there's a real opportunity for us there as well. Thanks Chair.
Thank you, Mark. Councillor Wittoni, Dimitri.
Thank you Chair. A few things. First, I have to declare an interest. I'm on the board of MHA. I don't think it's presidential, but I'm happy to be told to shut up by Matt if it is presidential. But because it's a consultation, I don't think it is. Three key points for me. The phosphate problem. Separate document on this, and I know from my MHA role, this is a considerable problem for the north of the county. And I think the option I've read, from what I've read from the paperwork, is that we're just going to proceed and hope we solve it. Have I got that right? That we hope we solve in the future? If not, we're going to have to sort of scramble, reallocate proportionately housing sites because of the phosphate problem. So I just wanted Mark's further details on that because that doesn't sound as a sound plan to me. I briefly touched upon it, but Martin raised the issue about allocation of housing. I've noticed that rural only takes 9%. I appreciate this is a consultation. Do you think that's sufficient? Given we just talked about climate change and given talk about traffic, particularly in my area, Chepstow, where you put most of the new housing around towns. I'm not sure that's the wisest move. Does the COVID-19 pandemic and its subsequent impact on the housing market, particularly the residential area that will at some point lose support from evictions? Factor that in. I suspect it doesn't, but if it does, that's great to know. But if it doesn't, what's our thinking on that? And lastly, low cost home ownership. Yeah, social housing, absolutely. We really need that. Low cost home ownership though, there's no way we can significantly ramp that up. I've looked at how we calculate that number. It's not really that clear how we calculate that number of of need. I assume it's based on what we currently have and then extrapolate that from growth. But is there not a way we can expand that greatly? Because for my age group, I'm probably a bit lower, that's a great way to get some capital, build yourself and to buy your own home outright eventually, rather than staying in a rented environment, which means you more than likely, well, you'll find it harder to get out of. I'll put it like that.
Sorry, I lost my mouse on the other screen. Thanks. Thanks councillor Wittoni. So yeah, three bits there in terms of phosphates, the proportion in rural villages and affordable housing with with COVID-19. In terms of phosphates, I think I'd describe as proceed with hope, not proceed and hope. We've set out three options. In terms of the other two, so either pause in trying to work through the issue and then restarting the LDP. Um, in terms of the other two, so either, um, pause in, um, trying to work through the issue and then restarting the LDP, um, or abandoning this one and starting again in, uh, you know, a year or two's time. I think they just have so many cons, um, or negatives to them that they, they just don't stack up in terms of trying to address all the other, um, objectives. Um, the thought of being in this limbo, I mean, we're already not going to have this plan finished until twenty twenty three. Um, you know, to, to leave that until twenty four, twenty four, twenty twenty five just doesn't really seem tenable to me in terms of trying to build the sustainable communities that we, we say desperately need. So with option one, um, you know, we haven't picked option one just because the other two are so bad. Uh, but we are making really good progress in proactive discussions with stakeholders. So, um, Welsh Water has been, um, absolutely fantastic to their credit in coming to meetings with us, um, meeting up with developers and really trying to find solutions. And there's a fairly clear way in which, um, some extra infrastructure investment, uh, could help us out in some key areas. So, um, you know, we'd look to focus that investment in areas like Monmouth and Abergueny to link with the, the main towns, uh, where there's a problem. So we're working with Welsh Water to see how that can be brought forward in their asset management plan, um, to be delivered. Um, because you'll probably be aware, they have asset management plan cycles and, uh, typically, uh, our LDPs are always slightly out of sync with those. So we need to get that into the twenty twenty five to twenty thirty asset management plan and that's what we're working with them on. They've also been discussing with us, uh, a temporary solution to try and, uh, address the current, uh, the current problem. So that will help us in the house building area, then there's other activities that natural resources Wales needs to lead on in terms of agriculture and how some, you know, slowly spreading or intensive agriculture is, is causing a different problem. Um, and for us, some of that problem is outside of our county, um, we're just at the, the bottom end of the, the river network. Um, so we are confident as we can be that the progress has been made, is, is really positive. Um, and we just have to keep pushing up that and working collaboratively, collaboratively with those other organisations to, to make that happen. And there's certainly the appetite, uh, in places like Welsh Water to, to help us with that. Um, in terms of, so yeah, I think I, I describe it as proceed and, uh, proceed with hope, not, not just proceed and hope. Um, we are, we are making some really good progress there. In terms of the, um, the balance of, of development, I, I do think that nine percent in the rural areas, um, in the villages is right. So that will allow us to have something akin to the current sixty forty, um, sites that we have, so where it's sixty percent affordable housing. And whether that policy looks exactly the same going forwards, um, remains to be seen in the deposit plan. Um, but we need to look at whether the sixty percent is correct. Um, those sites were only ever five to fifteen homes and the lessons learned are that the five homes, um, just didn't really stack up. You're trying to build to affordable based on three market. Um, and now the other way around, three affordable based on two market. Uh, and, you know, all it needed was one sort of hiccup with a bit of, uh, infrastructure and, and they weren't working. And given that they're in rural areas, there were quite often hiccups with, uh, with the infrastructure. So we need to review that, but the focus from national policy and our own policy and, and linking with the climate on urgency, you know, we should be building in the most sustainable places with amenities. Um, as a real shift in policy thinking to place making to, you know, twenty minute communities where, uh, most of the amenities you need are within a twenty minute walk or cycle. Um, and people don't need to jump in their car or go to different settlements. So we have to balance that approach with the need for some affordable housing in those villages to help sustain those and allow people to live in there, you know, the, the village that they're from and not have to move out to, to a nearby town or, or out of the county altogether. So it's trying to get that balance right, but yeah, we do think that nine percent strikes about the right balance, um, in terms of the sustainability uh, of the villages and the wider environmental sustainability of, of where people live. Um, affordable housing wise, um, I guess a couple of bits really. So we're, we're very mindful of the impact that COVID nineteen has had in exposing a level of homelessness in the county. Um, a lot of hidden homelessness has, has come to light and at the moment, the Welsh Government has, as, as you said, uh, a kind of a prohibition, for want of a better word, on, on evictions. Um, so we're, we're aware of that, there's, um, certainly an awareness of the need to ramp up the affordable housing delivery. Uh, what we do is, is a neutral tenure approach. So we don't tend to develop a set number of low cost home ownership and a set number of, of social rented, which helps us address our, our needs a bit more flexibly. And then if you're in a social rented property, you can staircase up or, or flip to low cost home ownership if your circumstances approve, uh, improve. Um, so that means you're not moving house, you can just change the way in which you live in it. Um, so if the house is perfectly adequate for your needs, you could become a part owner, um, stay there, uh, buy an extra share and an extra share. Or if your circumstances go the other way, you can go from being a, a low cost home ownership part owner to, uh, a rented tenant, either intermediate or social. So we don't create a kind of a false market of, um, needing to move just because the way in which you're, you're occupying the property doesn't work. Um, all we want is the people to need to move because their families grew and all their circumstances have changed. Um, rather than, you know, when they're stuck in some kind of weird constraint that we've built. So neutral tenure works in that regard. The figures in the local housing market assessment, um, the latest one from, from last year, um, for local housing, low cost home ownership needs are based on, uh, working out people's average incomes and then what they can afford on a mortgage. Um, so you, you get the figures from, uh, the proportion of people on the, uh, on the housing list with an income in this bracket or they could afford would be social rents. So that's where that proportion comes from. If they're earning a bit more but can't afford LCHO, they're in the intermediate market, intermediate rent bracket. Um, and then LCHO is those who are, are earning a, a fair bit more and could afford that, that mortgage. So there's, there's science behind it and that's where those numbers have come from. But the neutral tenure policy that we, uh, we adopt in housing allows that to, to flex, um, and it seems to be working pretty well.
Thank you, Mark. Councillor Eason, Tony.
Thank you, Chair. Um, good afternoon, Mark. We talked about your report the other night in, um, in a team session. Uh, I've got same sort of concerns that other members have mentioned about the development around, around the towns. Um, and I take you back a couple of years where the inspector turned down an application to build some houses affordable or whatever in the Raglan area because of infrastructure and those sort of problems. Then I come down to the south of the county where we're seeing Maegor and Undy becoming virtually one conurbation. Uh, Undy is encroaching on Roggett. Roggett is encroaching on Caldecott and, and on the, on the plans look to be consulted on is that we want to talk about the green wedge between Caldecott and Roggett being used for potential housing. Then to the north of, uh, the Caldecott, I believe would be a private development, I think, if we're looking at the map, which would be somewhere on the old golf club. Then to the east of Caldecott, we've got, we've not touched, uh, we haven't struck a, a, a spade in the ground on the, uh, on the, pu- pu- on the Port Skewett site. But there's also a consideration to have further development between Port Skewett and the M, A forty eight. It's fine, it's fine having a consultation on what might be, what could be, what may not be. But in every time you consult, we do nothing about the infrastructure. Francis has mentioned mega station, that's, that's an important need and an important link for that area. We've, we've mentioned what I call a B four two four five time and time and time again, because it's just insufficient for the tra- tra- traffic to run along those roads. We don't have a proper bus service and the Burns report recently came out as giving no consideration to what might be needed to the east of the, um, junction twenty three on the M, on the M four, M four, M forty eight. So to take this out, out to a consultation, we also need to look seriously at part and parcel of any development. If it's, if it's to go ahead, is to have proper decision on infrastructure. We met, we had the church hall development which is going on at the moment, Dr Surge is okay, they can manage it, that's the answer from the Northern Birmingham Health Board. But that's after the event, we need the decision before we, before we make a decision on building these particular, or agreeing these particular sites for development. It's very, very important, we look at these, the services that we need in the area before we say, okay, we put the house up, which we desperately need. We desperately need social housing, not affordable housing, social housing where youngsters can, um, actually be able to rent a place. And as Roger says, we need, uh, our social housing partner, I'll call my partner MHA, to be in a position to do just that. So I am concerned about any consultation has got to include total decisions on infrastructure. Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, thanks, Chair, thanks councillor Eason, I, I completely agree. Um, I just take you back to the purpose of this report is, is a very early stage. It is just, um, looking at the strategy and consulting on that. And what we're going to do alongside the plan, and work's already started now, is have a revised local transport plan. The LDP will be accompanied by an infrastructure plan and that'll look at the other aspects, so things like, uh, GPs, education. Um, a lot of that detail, we won't actually know until we know exactly which sites in the deposit plan are allocated. Um, so you know, which school catchments or GP surgeries things fall into or, or connectivity is needed. So, um, that, I completely agree that, that work's needed and that's in, in pipeline and we'll be there to inform the deposit plan, uh, in due course.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Joe Watkins.
Thank you very much, Chair. And to be fair, most of what I was going to say was just said by councillor Eason. Um, my concern whenever we talk about these, um, LDP plans is that we talk about growth in the local towns and yet Seven Side is not a local town, it is a series of small communities. And we don't have a great big shopping centre where people can actually gather together and do their local shopping needs. The twenty minute communities idea is a wonderful idea, but as we start to merge all the sections of Seven Side together by building in between of them, we haven't got twenty minute communities, we've got a great big blob down the south of the county. So I am very, very keen for us to make sure that we do maintain proper green wedges between all of the Seven Side communities and that when any developments are proposed, that they are thought of very carefully as to not overload the nature of those communities, because we're not a great big town down here and we haven't got the infrastructures in place. So we really do need to be very careful with how we think about that. And especially with now the idea that there will probably be a green belt following the line of the M forty eight to the north, which means we won't be building to the north side of Caldecott at all. Then surely that means that you're likely to be wanting to push even more development further south onto actually those small communities. So I'm really concerned about how this is actually going to play out. I appreciate this is consultation and I will be encouraging my residents to consult.
Mark, do you want to make any comments on that?
No, just to say noted really, I think a lot of that detail comes at the next stage with the deposit plan. Um, but yeah, I understand the point you're making, councillor Watkins, thanks.
Thank you, Mark, thank you, Joe. Uh, councillor Paul Pabia.
Yeah, thanks, Chair, and, uh, just obviously thank the cabinet member for, for bringing this forward and for, for officers for, uh, all the work that they've done in, in, over the last weeks and months. I know it's been, uh, difficult, particularly with the pandemic, uh, which has significantly shifted our, uh, our time scales. Uh, and just, uh, you know, with my old hat on as, as Chair of the Economy and Development Select, you know, there, there shouldn't be anything in here that surprises members. You know, a huge amount of work has been done in, in workshops, uh, over the last weeks and months. Um, and, and I know, uh, my successor has continued that over the last few weeks. Um, I, I'm not going to rehearse any of the, the issues in terms of why. Uh, obviously in the north, the phosphate issue is, is a real concern. Uh, and I think you've sort of addressed that with councillor Patruni's, uh, 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 response to his, uh, question. I think we do need to put additional pressure on natural resources Wales to start making some decisions a- around this. I- in the south, uh, and I have to say, I'm really concerned about the Welsh Government's decision this week to, uh, what it is in effect, um, produce or, or set in, uh, motion a moratorium on, on road building, uh, uh, across the country. Um, this could well, uh, impact the sustainability on any further development in the south of the county. I just wondered, uh, have officers spoken to, uh, officials in Welsh Government to understand, uh, the remit of this moratorium and how long it may last? Uh, just to get some i- insight on that would be really helpful. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Mark, just before you come to answer that, uh, what I'll say is that, uh, councillor Paul Jordan has, has raised a hand to speak next after this and I'll take that as the last speaker on this point then. Uh, so, Mark, do you want to answer Paul, Paul would be me?
Yeah, sorry, I'll drop you brief as well. And the short version is, um, not yet, we haven't spoken to the Welsh Government about that, um, that announcement. Um, so, yeah, we'll have to see how that influences other bits of work like the Chapstow study.
Thank you. Councillor Paul Jordan.
Yes, tha- thank you, Chair, I mean, um, very briefly, there's nothing mentioned in the, uh, preferred strategy of section one five seven of the Housing Act nineteen eighty five that effectively is a, um, local houses for local people policy. Um, that's yet another tool in the box that we can use to, um, add to the provision of housing for local people. Um, I have mentioned it to, recently to Mark and, uh, hopefully during the consultation period, that can be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Do you have anything there, Mark, or is that just noted?
I need to say, Chair, that it's, it is a more detailed issue we'd look at in the deposit plan, but, um, we'll, we'll look at that and we'll look at some of the stuff that Gwynedd Council's doing as well.
Thank you, thank you very much. Mark, thank you very much for all your input there and answering all those questions. Uh, thank you, members, for all your, uh, questions. Um, well, I would remind, uh, members that is, uh, two point one is now changed from what was published. Uh, it's now going to be an eight week consultation as opposed to a six week consultation. Councillor Sarah Jones, uh, has endorsed it to the council, do we have a second there for that, please?
Oh, secretary, Chair.
Thank you, thank you very much. And we will go to the vote then to, uh, to accept that, please. Bear with us, we'll put that in the chat bar. Okay, members, so we, uh, we've got the majority there, so that's carried. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you, so moving on, um, through the agenda, we got, uh, we're at six, notices, notices of motions. We've got seven motions represented, one of those has been deferred. Um, so what I would ask members is to be succinct as you possibly could. Um, keep your points novel and as non repetitive as you possibly can, because we've got a long evening ahead of us still, the day is ebbing away from us. And, um, I'm not sure what delivery delivers out this far, so if we can ask members to, to keep that in mind. Uh, so, uh, six point one, we've, uh, submitted by county councillor Richard John. Richard?
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman, and for the first motion I brought forward to the, to the virtual chamber. I'm, I'm really pleased, uh, to, to bring this motion forward because I, I wanted us to have the opportunity to get to the very heart of what sort of, of council we want for our county. Gender balance is an issue that has interested me for, for many years. Um, in two thousand and eight, I wrote a dissertation as part of my master's degree about the, um, uh, about the representation of women in the Welsh Conservative Party. And, um, I, I don't think it's a spoiler to tell you that, um, it was pretty poor. Thirteen years on and it hasn't got much better. But in Monmouthshire, it would be very easy for us to get a distorted view of local government. Thirty five percent of our councillors are women, forty percent in my own gr- in my own group. And we've got councillors aged in every decade from thirties through to eighties. We've got some brilliant female role models, um, ac- across the political groups, uh, including, uh, past chairman of the council. Here, it's perfectly normal for female councillors to hold senior roles, whether it's as a group leader, chair of planning, deputy leader, select chair, or armed forces champion, or cabinet member. But this diversity is not the norm. There are councils very close to us, but almost every single councillor is a middle aged or older white man. No council in Wales has ever achieved gender parity. In Blaina, Guent, there are only five female councillors, in Merthyr Tiddfil, four, in Anglesey, just three women on the entire council. Local government has existed in various forms in this part of the world since the Romans set up their administrative capital in Caerwent. To have four or five more women on your council now than you would have had two thousand years ago is not progress. A council which is more reflective of the people is better placed to adequately represent the broad range of views and experiences of the public. And there's a direct link, isn't there, between the composition of a council on the one hand and its activities, the subjects it debates, the policies it scrutinises and the decisions it makes. When universal suffrage was introduced in nineteen eighteen, it was an acceptance that men, however sympathetic, could not fully and adequately represent the interests of women at the ballot box. A hundred years later and we're still discussing why gender representation matters. Now, today's Monmouthshire County Council is more reflective of the people of Monmouthshire than ever before. But we do need to go further, so that's why I'm asking that today we So that's why I'm asking that today we recognise that gender parity is a goal that's worth striving for and that we all agree to take steps to make it happen. And I think we're in a really strong position to do so. We're already partway to 50 50. We already have a critical mass of female councillors, many of whom are brilliant role models for other women, demonstrating that being a councillor isn't just a job for retired men. Some councils have very few role models or individuals to advocate on behalf of other women, which can make change really difficult without any form of positive discrimination. Unless the gender balance in local government improves next year, there will be increasing pressure on Welsh Government to introduce statutory quotas. And personally, I'm not a fan of quotas. I think it's it's awful for any politician to think that they've been elected on the basis of their gender rather than their ability. And I'm not advocating quotas today. Of course, we want the best people for the job, but there's nothing there's nothing specific about the job of a politician that makes men better qualified than women. In the Conservative Party, for instance, I know many members who choose their candidates have a subconscious and preconceived idea of what a typical conservative politician looks like. Now, there's more we can do to break down further barriers for underrepresented groups by facilitating hybrid meetings in future. The pandemic may have helped in some way make these roles more accessible. By backing this motion today, we're recognising that greater gender balance will improve our decision making, that this is something that's worth fighting for. We're committing to taking action locally to ensure the public have a representative slate of candidates from which to choose in next year's elections. And I hope that by bringing this debate forward almost a year before those elections, we all have plenty of time to encourage, support and mentor potential councillors. We also have time to take a lead for others to follow. If we can achieve gender parity here, then what's stopping other councils and political parties from taking positive action of their own? We all came into politics to make a difference, to lead change, rather than stand on the sidelines waiting for it to happen around us. So I'm urging you to commit to this bold and ambitious target here in Monmouthshire, something that's never been achieved in any council in the country, demonstrating to the rest of Wales that this is a progressive, dynamic council with a political will to lead change and committed to representing everyone in our communities. So I really hope you'll get behind this motion today. Thank you all very much.
Councillor John, thank you very much for your motion. And I can confirm that's been seconded in the chat bar by councillor Jane Pratt. And Jane is actually asked to speak. So Jane, I'll come to you first.
Thank you very much, Chairman, and I fully support this motion. And we all know as local politicians that in many of local elections, when we're walking down a street, only three out of every 10 people in that street will even bother to vote. And politics is criticised for no longer representing the community and being out of touch. And I think this motion today is a huge step towards making this chamber more inclusive and representative of the society we represent. And it has my full support. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Pratt. Councillor Petroni, Dimitri?
Yes, thank you, Chair. And I I I totally support the sentiments of the motion. However, I wish to propose an amendment to the motion, if I may, Chair. And that's just to add at the end, remove the full stop of the last sentence and add and to increase the representation of other protected characteristics, full stop. I can repeat that after the 2022, remove the full stop and add and to increase the representation of other protected characteristics. Chair, the reason why I added, wish to add that amendment, although I have spoken to councillor John, who who gave us a heads up of this motion, is because in the year or year and a half of the movement we've seen across the world on race, and we saw the marches now, I don't want to get into the whether the Black Lives Matter is a political movement or not. Nonetheless, many young people were motivated, but many all types of people motivated to peacefully march, to fight for racial parity or feel like everyone's treated equally. And for us to pass a motion on representation without recognition of that, I feel like is an option, is a moment lost. So I wish to add that. And I I I hope to address another very thorny cultural issue, which I'm not particularly keen to go down because I have no knowledge of it, to be honest. But I suppose it hopes addresses the technical question I wish to ask councillor John as well, which is, does councillor John mean people who are born female? Is does that is that what councillor John means? I am assuming that's what he means. I take that wholly back if that's not what he means. Or or does he mean that people who describe themselves or feel and who identify as female at the point of their standing for office? And I and so I thought if we add that amendment, that might avoid any kind of discriminatory, unconsciously discriminatory kind of thing to the motion. If I'm trying to be careful with my words, but I'm struggling because it's such a thorny issue. I don't want to fall foul of this. But I just why I wanted to add the amendment, I I I totally agree. And that that political parties should make every attempt. I'm very lucky to have mixed heritage and be leader of the opposition group. I think one of the few in Wales. So I I feel acutely that this is the right move by councillor John. I just wish to add that amendment, just to make sure that we cover all representative protected characteristics and to maybe address that thorny issue. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Petroni. Do you have a second of your amendment?
Yes, I'll second it, Chair. Martin Grokett.
Thank you. So we need to put that to the vote now? Okay. Okay. So we're now speaking, we're now speaking to the proposed amendment, motion with the proposed amendment. If anyone has any questions?
Chair.
Almond, councillor What?
Sorry, I did miss that. No, I I mean, the reason I think that it goes way beyond that. It it it's deeper than just gender. And I think Dimitri's trying to reach out and and kind of expand on it a little bit. I mean, historically, I've often wondered when we moved into County Hall, why, why we didn't have a broader representation from not just women, but also from minorities as well. Now, clearly, Dimitri kind of is the representation that we have from certainly from our group. And the group, Labour group, I've got to be honest with you, doesn't it doesn't really reflect well on that we're predominantly, you know, I'm next to Dimitri. I think I'm the youngest. I know that I'll get some rolling eyes then from some of the older ones in our group. And so it does, we do really need to reach out and think about how we can encourage women and other people with protected protected characteristics. But more importantly, when when we moved in, we moved from Meir, we moved to the County Hall, we never built or crashed. And yet, if you look at the the local authority, the work is within the authority. We we have a high and an increasing high percentage of those people that work for us are women. I could never understand that. Now, I know exclusively as a parent myself, you know, I I involve myself with parental activities, but we were just completely, you know, it's like women simply didn't exist. So I would hope really, without being too long winded about it, that if councillor John wins this today office and amendment, that that would be addressed immediately, really, for childcare, because it's not an attractive proposition, really, to give up your job part time or full time as well to become a county councillor, which, to be honest with you, is not an exactly fantastically well paid job, obviously unless you're a cabinet member, which I think is is considered to be a a full time job. But it's also, I'd like to think as well, that women from different ethnic backgrounds would come forward because, as I've mentioned earlier in the conversation, you know, we are certainly more ethnically diverse. But we do, and I don't want to enter into the my own, we do have a poor understanding of that. If you look at the lowest paid jobs in the county, and it is the growing sector, our care jobs. And then a large proportion of them, I guess, I don't know accurate figures, but probably about 30 to 40, perhaps even 50% of those are from of European heritage. So, you know, we're not really doing enough within the authority to to kind of reach out, I think, to a broader constituency. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor What. Councillor John?
Yes, thank you, Chair. We will be minded to to accept the the amendment from councillor Petroni. I, as councillor Petroni said, I did message other group leaders in advance of this debate to seek cross party support for the motion. But but also to reassure the the Labour group that I wasn't bringing this this motion forward with any any party political intentions, because I'm aware both the Conservative and the Labour group have some progress to make in in this area, but happy to accept the amendment.
Okay, thank you. In that case, I'm happy to move straight to the vote then to vote on the amendment.
We haven't got a thing up, Chair.
It'll just come up now. Just bear with us, please.
Chair, just not to be pedantic, the motion was submitted by me, but that's fine.
I think members are aware, I think, that we're voting on the amendment to the motion from councillor Richard John. And that that's carried. Thank you very much for everyone. So the motion is now amended. So now the substantive motion. And Sarah, did you want to speak on that motion? Sorry, I apologize. I think I had councillor Watkins next. And then councillor Jones. Sorry. Joe. Who's like to now speak on this motion, which is the substantive motion. Alma, do you have to say your cameras are on?
I'm sorry.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I had to suddenly smile to child emergency, so I was running around. So yes, that's one of the things about trying to be in favour of how we have these hybrid meetings. It does mean that it is slightly easier to manage as a working mother to actually be able to have these the facility of being this. So in favour of the motion, I fully support the motion. And our democracy will only truly work when it is equal representation. And although our council is doing better than many across Wales, and we still have a way to go before we attain 50 50 representation, including that of trying to better better proportion of other protected characteristics as well. It's really important that we look at how that is achieved and how we can work towards that as individual political groups or as the independents are, so for their communities. Since becoming a councillor, I've really worked to try and encourage more and more women to feel that they can take a role in local government. And in talking to those women, the number one concern that they have is the perception that politics is a realm for angry and aggressive confrontation. And I would like to challenge this council as part of this motion, that we keep our debates civil. And we dial down on the aggression and hostility that can sometimes become part of this chamber. I've encouraged women to feel confident that they can come along to council, become councillors, and that they don't have to engage in that style of debate. And I think it's really important that we show that so that we can show that in our actions over the next year if we actually want to be realistic about what we might be able to achieve. Monmouthshire Liberal Democrats are more than happy to try and achieve the greater balance of gender representation and also to work towards better recognition of other protected characteristics, sorry, protected characteristics such as disability and race. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Watkins. Councillor Jones, Sarah.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, just very briefly, I just wanted to say, I mean, some of the shocking statistics here, around 28% of councillors are female. But the one that always strikes home with me is that at the current rate of progress, my nine year old daughter is going to be almost 70 before she sees gender balance in local government, which for me really drives home the challenges that we face. And what sort of message does that send to her and to all her peer group? For me personally, I want to see a position we're in where children don't see local government as something that isn't accessible to them. They see it as an opportunity as they grow up, that they can go into those leadership positions. It doesn't matter what their gender, what their race, what their background. And it's not just about local government. We know that boardrooms, for example, female representation, it stands at just about 30%. But today, as we know, is about council and what we can do. And councillor What's, I think, you know, your comments were a bit concerning. You said it was like women didn't exist when we moved offices over. And personally, you know, I think we've made great strides as a council. I had my son five years ago, and I remember bringing him along to the council chamber, chairing a meeting with him next to me, six weeks old. And I was nothing more than welcomed and felt accommodated by the whole process that we have set up. So I think we've got some great opportunities. We've made great strides, remote access to meetings, for example. We were one of the first councils to do that. And like Joe said, we're moving to that hybrid model, which is going to make us even more accessible for underrepresented groups to stand in the future. But this motion is great because what it's doing is it's bringing to the forefront and it's asking us to make a political commitment. As political groupings, we need to be encouraging more women to come forward. And on a personal level, I've done that over the years. I'm proud to say that one of the people that I've encouraged has become a very capable councillor and is with us in this meeting now. And I'm going to have lots more friends and 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 women that I know getting involved in politics because I know it's about encouraging them and giving them that support and development to make that step. So well done, Richard. Brilliant motion to bring forward and one that I think we should all be committing to. And I fully support it and I fully support the amendments. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. I'll take just one more before we go to the vote. For Roger, councillor Harris.
Thank you, Chair. Coming from our household with three, if you like, and I can see one sitting outside, absolutely dominant women that won't be put down in any way. I have absolutely no problem with this motion whatsoever or the amendment. And I'd be perfectly honest. We have ladies of great character in the chamber at the moment. We as a as a party have had ladies of great character in the past. It's unfortunate that it didn't happen this time. Ladies or women, whatever you want to say, should not be put off. We're not aggressive. Every now and again, if injustices come up, we fight them accord as we quite like the Swindus, but it's not a nasty council. I served on another council in Surrey, and again, it was not a nasty council. I know they I know they can be. It doesn't happen here. We just need, we just need the right people. It doesn't matter what sex they are. As long as they're up for the job and I want to do a proper job. And that's reflected, if you like, we're talking about local government. Look at the Welsh Assembly Government and work out how many Labour members there are after the 30, and you might get quite surprised. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Roger. Councillor Pratt, would you, are you happy to second the amended motion?
Yes, I am, Chairman.
Thank you very much. In that case, we'll go to the vote on the amended motion. Oh, councillor John, did you want to do you want to come back on any of those points before we do that?
No, other than to thank members for their support, this is something that's been something I've I've been championing for for many years, as I know many other councillors have. And if we pass this motion today, I'll be really proud of of what we've achieved and what we're going to go on to achieve. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor John. So that is now in the chat bar to vote on. And very well carried. So thank you very much, everyone, for that. We'll move on to 6.2, which is a motion submitted by 6.2, which is a motion submitted by County Councillor Paul Jordan. Paul.
Yes, thank you, Chair. In fact, this motion has some synergy with the previous motion. The reason for this motion arises from the decision by the Football Association of Wales to relegate Abgwanney Women's Football Club from tier one to tier two, in spite of the team being fourth in the in the league, and the failure of the Football Association of Wales to explain the reasoning behind the decision and publish their review. Indeed, if they did publish the review, it may it may make sense, and the football club may be prepared to accept that position. But until such time as there's some scrutiny and openness, the whole position is quite outrageous. And it's not a way in which we should encourage or they should encourage women to become involved in sport. The Football Association of Wales received £750,000 at the end of last year from FIFA, another £750,000 from Camelot, i.e. the lottery. They have sponsorship from BT and JD Sports. And my view is that if members pass this motion, we should write to the Football Association of Wales and also copy in those other organizations to be so that they're made aware of the position of the association. Thank you, Chair.
Paul, thank you very much for that. Thank you for bringing the motion. And I see in the chat bar, that's already been seconded by councillor Sheila Woodhouse. So we'll go to the chat bar. Councillor Lisa Dimmock.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, councillor Jordan, for bringing this motion forward. Trying to engage women in sports can be a challenging task at best of times, and the decision to relegate Abgwanney Women's Football Club team by the FAW has caused a lot of disappointment and upset. The underlying issue here is the unfairness in the scoring system, and it should be based on the team's ability. As you said, Paul Abgwanney have a very good track record compared to other clubs who have gone up a tier despite never winning a match. And this has caused an outcry on social media, and it's really reassuring our members in the Senate are working cross-party to call for fairness going forward. I want to take an opportunity to thank Peter Fox, Laura Jones, Dalif Jewell, and Heathen David, who have supported this. So I will be supporting this motion. I hope my colleagues in this virtual chamber will support it too. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Lisa. Councillor Maureen Powell.
Thank you, Chairman. I definitely support this. A few years ago, when I was chairman of the county council, and I was able to present prizes and awards to this team who'd done exceptionally well. In one of the national papers, I believe it was the Western Mail a few weeks ago, when this first started up, they gave the reason for putting them down, the fact that they didn't have their own gym on the premises. Well, I think that is absolutely ludicrous. How is ever any small football team, rugby team, whatever, whether it's for boys or girls, going to be able to afford things like gyms on the premises until they're in in actual first-class sport? So I think they're being very, very stupid. And I think it's very unfair. And I will back the girls all the way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Maureen. Councillor Armand Watts.
Yes, Chair, thank you for letting me speak. Yeah, I did look at the criteria. I think Maureen's actually made a very good point. And I think I'm picking really the Football Association in a slightly more forensic kind of way, really on on challenging and what they specifically what their criteria is. She rightly brought up, as she said, the gym. Well, I've looked at the other teams that have been relegated into tier two. That includes Swansea University. Does it say that Swansea University haven't got a gym? Well, you know, I think he's pushing everybody's imagination, really. So I'm not entirely sure what their criteria is, but certainly I would be happy to support this. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Roger Harris.
Thank you, Chair. Fully support the motion. The FAW board are probably white, male and pale, so what do you expect? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Councillor Sheila Woodhouse.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd just like to offer my support for this is the reason I seconded it. Abgwanney Town Ladies Football has for several years punched above its weight, competing against larger cities and towns. It has had several successful seasons. With facilities that are top class and a record that equals any club in Wales, it finds itself demoted to a lower division, which does not reflect the success of this fine club. How this decision was reached is not clear, and there are suggestions that the system does not have transparency or evidence of fair play. I believe the situation should be revisited and clear evidence put to the club so that it can its future, which was so bright, can be maintained.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Councillor Watts, your camera's on again. That's a couple of times. So if you can be quite mindful of that, it'd be really appreciated. Thank you. And Jim, councillor Higgins, yours cameras on as well. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Okay, so we can move straight to the vote with this. There's no more raised hands. Councillor Jordan, do you want to come back to this? Speak to this?
I think the position is quite clear. It's probably going to be supported by all the all the members. And that being the case, we write as suggested. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Paul. Okay, so the voting function is now in the chat bar, members. Thank you. So that's carried. Thank you very much, everyone. So we'll move swiftly on to 6.3, which is motion by councillor Tony Easton. Tony.
Thank you, Chair. And I hope we don't have gender balance problems with salmon. I bring this motion to the council because we have the Leynet Fishermen, which actually in councillor Fox's ward or his constituency now. And they've been under a lot of pressure from NRW to reduce and reduce and reduce their catch. At the moment, they've got a catch and catch and release policy. They've got a catch policy of five salmon a year or five or six. They want to be pushed into a catch and release policy, which would take away the the feelings of what they're actually doing. On my motion, there's an annex sent to it, which I explained exactly what I was talking about. And no doubt, members will have read that. If any questions they want to ask or the ideas they're thinking of, I would like that to be supported and possibly sent to the Member of Senate for Rural Affairs, the Member of Senate for Monmouth, Member of Senate for Newport East, which is John Griffiths. I'd like it sent to the four Members of Senate for South Wales East. And I would also like it sent to the lone Liberal Democrat Member of the Senate. So we've got a full balance across the Senate. And I would hope they would support my I would I would they would support my motion if it was sent to them and try and get NRW to come off the fence and allow the this Healthiest Group to operate as they are. I do have personal concerns of the way NRW appear to operate within the in the wealth state, wealth country. We've got similar problems as a county, that we don't get proper meetings with the Caligun Wentus Trainers District. This is this is NRW playing high-handed. I feel that I feel they should be more representative, more responsive to the public's needs rather than what seems to be a very high-handed approach. So I don't need to say much more, I don't think. Would you all please support my motion? And would you support sending the the annex that I sent, which you would have received as a separate email? There's a bit of a mix up on the when the agenda went out. So I'll just leave you there, Chair.
Chairman, it's Jim Higgins, and I'm seconding that.
Thank you very much. Councillor Easton, thank you very much for bringing that motion to the council. And thank you, Jim, for seconding. Maureen, your hands raised.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Chairman. I feel very strongly about this. We're losing so much of our heritage in all sorts of ways, not whether it's fishing, whatever it is. It's as though they can't let anything stay as it has been. Ley fishing has been there for centuries and centuries, and it's it's a matter for the area. It'd be strange without it. And I think that it's very foolish of them. And NRW are getting so big, I'm saying big sorted, so commanding about things.
Thank you, Maureen.
They're doing. And I so I definitely support this motion.
Thank you very much. Councillor Jane Pratt.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I support this motion too. I won't repeat what's already been said, but NRW and the sort of interface with them, I believe, is part of my portfolio. And I don't remember, I have no recollection of any consultation or being sent any details or information about their intention in this regard. So, you know, I fully support the motion, and I thank councillor Easton for bringing it today. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Joe Watkins.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to support the motion as well. I've attended one of the Leynet Fishermen's days and really found it fascinating to discover what they do and how it's been done for so many years. It's vitally important to keep this really interesting and quite unique way of doing our showing our heritage. I fully support the motion.
Thank you very much. Councillor Roger Harris.
Thank you, Chair. Joe just said it all. Absolutely support the motion. Cannot understand why it would even be thought as something that should be stopped. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. There's no more hands raised, so I'm happy to move to the vote. I'll come into our chat bar in a second. Okay. Sorry, Tony, did you want to respond to reply to any of that? Will we go to the vote?
There's not a lot to say. But in relation to what councillor Pratt said about within a portfolio, I will contact Jane specifically about my concerns with NRW. Perhaps this can be taken up in another forum, if that's all clear, Chair.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. Thank you. In that case, we can go to the vote, which is in the chat bar, everyone. Which is very well carried. So thank you very much, Tony, for that. Thank you very much, members. 6.4 has been deferred until the next meeting. 6.5 is submitted by County Councillor Armand Watts. Armand.
Thank you. I'll remain myself to turn my camera off at the end of it. The reason why I brought this so forward, really, was that, you know, the deadline for settled status was fast coming up. And as the responsible cabinet member, Lisa Dimmock, knows, we've been in correspondence. So I was surprised when I I was asking questions about this some time back, where the backdrop was when Welsh government were advertising that the timeline was soon to evaporate, and that they were being fairly proactive at promoting and settled, you know, to encourage families to obtain settled status, that the MPs were, I mean, of all different parties, really. And yet, Monmouthshire hadn't really done much in the way of, more recently anyway, promoting the the advantages and the immediate advantages getting settled status. My understanding of it was, or certainly from Lisa's response previously, was that that we think Monmouthshire believe that we have 1,000 people who may be eligible for settle status in the county, but we're not entirely sure about the actual true figures. And yet, we understand there's been 1,560 applicants already towards the Home Office. Now, that's a rather confusing message. I'm not looking to score points here, but the bottom line is, we know that the people who won't make these applications are going to be the vulnerable, people who were victims of trafficking. And we brought this up in the in the council before, and people who are basically, you know, victims of modern-day slavery, the elderly, and specifically children. And I worry about that. So, you know, I hold hope, really, collectively, the authority is responsible enough also to be worried about it too. And that we will collectively support this motion to ensure that we do everything that we can to encourage people to come forward and accept the new legislation and the settled status. Thank you, Chair.
Armand, thank you very much for bringing the motion to to the council. Do you have a second of that, please?
Chair, yeah, I have my hand up.
Fantastic. Okay. Dimitri, councillor Betruni.
Chair, I need to declare an interest. I don't believe it's non-presidential. I spoke to the officer, Matt Phillips, about this. I work in this area. What I would add to councillor Watts's motion, which is absolutely correct, is that we, as a council, we have to be absolutely vigilant. I am to be careful here. I have to I am aware, cognizant, that other local authorities have experienced difficulties and have become through through carelessness rather than deliberate maliciousness have come could come across as discriminatory against the Withdrawal Act. So I think councillor Watts's motion is well timed, given the deadline. And it's prudent for the council to be mindful of this and to be conscious of all the different ramifications of the deadline come 1st of July.
Thank you. Councillor Dimmock, Lisa.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, councillor Watts, for bringing this motion today. And thank oh, gosh, my battery's going dead for a moment. And thank you for the correspondence we shared. I attended a seminar earlier in the month on this, and it's clear there were a few misconceptions about the process. And it's important we squash these and encourage EU citizens to apply. Our MCC comms team have been pushing out posts on social media channels with deadlines deadline reminders. And I can confirm an email has been sent out to all school heads to pass on to parents of children who are EU, EAA, or Swiss citizens living in Monmouthshire with a multilingual information leaflet with contact contact details for independent support. And I urge members to share this information with their networks, which I'll send out on an email by close of play today. So thank you, councillor Watts. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Councillor Paul Pavia.
Yes, thanks, Chairman. Could I just thank Armand for bringing forward his motion? As councillor Dimmock has just said, you know, Newfields Law wrote to to us back in November time, offering their offering their services. That went out to head teachers, and that was obviously pushed out to parents. There's been some recent comms as well, as councillor Dimmock has said, in, you know, in terms of a multilingual sheet, Polish, Slovakian, Hungarian, Romanian, obviously making parents aware that they they need to do that. There's obviously a number of challenges here. You know, the UK government doesn't know how many European citizens are working in the country. And thus, you know, our devolved administrations don't know that number either, hence the underestimation, I think, in citizens in this country and potential applications coming through. The other the other challenge is you can't legally ask European citizens the residential status because they're legally entitled to work here up until the deadline. I mean, and that will obviously change beyond the end of this month. Personally, I think it would have been sensible, given the pandemic, to have an extension to the schemes application timeframe to the end of the end of this calendar year. I think that would have been more appropriate. But I take the the approach that the Home Office have said they're going to be sympathetic to mitigating circumstances. And I hope they they do stand by that and and don't push forward a hostile approach to to citizens who have missed the deadline. I think the challenge for for local authorities, not necessarily around working parents, but for those EU citizens in receipt of social services and who are processing applications for children looked after, I think is relatively straightforward. Because obviously, local authorities, as corporate parents, know those those individuals who they are caring for. But I think if you look at the the adults in receipt of care, particularly older adults, those who may be self-funders, then it's a little bit more difficult to identify those individuals. And that's where the challenge comes, I think. Understanding whether they have family or friends to support them in that process, understanding whether they have capacity to consent to that process, or whether they require court-appointed advocates to support them in the process, is is that complex challenge where I think Newfields Law come into their own. And I've done some webinar work with with Newfields, not not directly with them, but hosting some of their some of their seminars through ADSS Cymru. And I have to say, with my professional work hat on, I think social directors and heads of service across Wales have been engaged on this issue. Despite the incredible being incredibly stretched by the pandemic, and have continued to work with Welsh government and the Home Office in this regard, I will say I do have some concerns about the high number of pre-settled status awards that were made by the Home Office leading up to this deadline. And there's obviously still work for those individuals to do and to convert that pre-settled status into settled status. And I know they've got about five years, I think, to do that. But, you know, that's not the end of their process. If they want to stay and remain in this country, then they need to convert that pre-settled status to settled status. And I think we've got a job of work to do as a local authority to to push that home. But I think my concern as well is, and I think this has probably passed many people by, is that the status process is reciprocal. So we've got UK citizens abroad who have to do the same thing by the same deadline within their EU state where they are currently domiciled. And I think we probably will see more of UK citizens abroad falling foul of this deadline than EU citizens in this country. But, you know, I'm confident that as an authority, we've pushed the measures hard. But, you know, I welcome this motion and anything we can do beyond this deadline. And, you know, if we need to advocate with the Home Office, if there are particular circumstances that come to our attention, I think we should be proactive in doing that. So, thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Frances Taylor. Are you there, Frances?
Can you hear me, Chair?
I can hear you, can't see you.
Oh, okay. Well, I've got my camera on, but I think it's lagging behind, so I do apologize. Oh, there we are. I think that's better. Sorry. Can I just ask two questions, please, if I may, Chair? I obviously support councillor Watts's motion and I'm sure that we're very grateful that he has brought it forward. Two questions. One is, can you let us know what or can, you know, cabinet member advise us what support organisations we're suggesting that people use in terms of providing, you know, advocacy? Because as councillor Pavea has detailed, you know, there are a number of complex cases and from the work I do, I'm also aware of, you know, people that have been in a situation that have felt very unsettled and also those who've made plans to return because of complexities. And secondly, can I just check? So there was a discussion about some proactive communications that have gone out. Is that as a result of councillor Watts's motion or would they have happened anyway? You know, I'd be just interested to know how proactive our council has been on this matter. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Dimmock, Lisa.
Yeah, I do believe that a lot of the communication online has gone out in the last week, so that may well be as a result of councillor Watts's motion. I'm just about to send an email to you with all the contact and email and telephone numbers that people can use, if that's okay. That's going to go out to all members.
Thank you very much, councillor Dimmock. Thank you. And whilst we ask democratic services to put that into the chat bar, do you have any comments or replies, Armand, councillor Watts?
Yes, I do, Chair. I just wanted to thank everybody for their support. It wasn't overtly political, but what I wanted to say is what I'm scared about is, as I vote for my own motion here, is it really, from the beginning, really, forget about the why we're here, the government's approach was to introduce an app and the flaws in the app were that if there was a marginal anomaly, whether it's a spelling mistake, the wrong date of birth, or, for example, you'll often find across Europe that a man's surname is, or a woman's surname, or the child, the female child, can be different than the male's surname. That anomaly was enough then to cause abject chaos, where people then were having, subjected then to speaking to rather grumpy people, underqualified, poorly trained. And, you know, we've seen a bit of that in more recent times with other applications that the government have rolled out. And so I worry that there's an assumption really that simply because parents have registered, and it says in my email that they assume then that their children have got settle status, when they clearly haven't simply because they were born here, lived here. And a remarkable thing about those children is the level of assimilation, the engagement you have with parents and children, where often you'll have children then engaging on behalf of the parents, explaining stuff to the parents. And I do, again, I worry about that. It's wonderful it is to see. I think that we're doing them an injustice by not doing enough up until now. It shouldn't really be Armand Watts pushing for this motion. It's something this authority should have done frankly months ago. So, all right, okay, I'm glad that you're finally getting on board with this. But it kind of saddens me really that we don't properly understand where these people are, what they do for a living, how they earn, how they live, culturally, who they are. And it goes back to the original point, is it's not just about having, it's about reaching that to the broader demographic. These people are a significant part of our community. Paul knows that very, very well. I'm sure that the church he attends, and I say this with respect, is attended by some of those people. They, you know, they're a significant part of my own ward as well. So we should be on board with this. We shouldn't have to be dragging our heels on this. And I would say very politely to Lisa, she needs to keep a close honest because we need to know that this doesn't become, you know, another situation where we've got Home Office, you know, with jackboots on, knocking down doors and then, you know, extraditing people and splitting up families. And don't think that can't happen because we lived through the Windrush scandal and the level of denial that was associated with that went on for years. It's only more recent times that we've been subjected to some kind of conciliation and apology. So thank you, Chair. Thank you for listening. Thank you, members, for supporting.
Thank you very much. And councillor Watts will be pleased to know that that has gone through. So thank you very much. Would you mind turning your camera off now?
Sorry.
Okay, so moving on to 6.6. Members, we still have got quite a considerable amount ahead of us. So I'm going to call another five-minute break at this stage to rejoin at two or three minutes, three minutes past six. Thank you very much, everyone. Okay, members, welcome back. I'll just wait for Nick of Democratic Services to remove the card. Thank you very much. So, members, we are at 6.6. Motion submitted by County Councillor Judah Thomas. Judah, thank you very much for bringing this motion to council. Over to you.
Okay, thanks. I was just pent up, ready to start and we had a break, but we'll go with it. I'll try and give you a brief. Obviously, the motion is as printed. I don't bring this motion lightly to the council, but this is right in my ward and I've had a huge number of complaints about the poor and dangerous state of the Carriageway on the Hereford Road coming into Abingavenny near the Esso Garage. It was first complained about on something like the 18th of January by councillor Roger Harris. I then complained in early March and indeed, I visited with a senior member of staff from MCC Highways, the Carriageway, to actually look at it. And it is in a poor state of repair. I've had numerous emails, phone calls, people have badgered me in the street in person, and there's been a huge amount of traffic on social media. And in fact, I think 200 people voted on Facebook that it was the worst bit of road in Abingavenny area. In April, a complaint went in from councillor David Jones for Crecorni, complaining that people in his ward were finding it difficult to get into Abingavenny and about the very poor impression that that bit of road has on people visiting Abingavenny. And certainly, we're banging on about, let's open up the towns, let's make businesses successful. If you're jarred going into the town, it doesn't really encourage you to stop. I've had complaints from a broad spectrum of people, obviously car drivers, motorcyclists in particular, cyclists being knocked off by the very poor state of the road, loose stone, et cetera, pedestrians not wanting to cross because they just felt they weren't really safe. This section of Carriageway was scheduled to be done quite early on and I can appreciate that COVID-19 has had a huge effect and obviously flooding, which took staff away. But in reality, communication has been very poor in terms of telling people actually what was happening. And this really hasn't helped. It's exacerbated the situation. People got incredibly frustrated about the state of the road and not knowing when it was going to be done. And I think that really needs to be looked at. I also think in terms of reaction, in terms of some of the patching, it has been incredibly poor with cold tarmac being put down, not being put in properly and then not being rolled to make sure that it actually sticks. I hope that this motion is passed today. I know it's probably fairly controversial, but that the cabinet member does look at policies and procedures in terms of how quickly highways react and also in terms of actually telling people what's happening. We seem to be good at putting out certain messages, but we're certainly not good at putting out the sort of hard facts about what's happening on the road. There are major concerns, I'm sure, from other members, other ward members across Mammashia about the current state of the highways. And in a rural authority, then highways, whether we like it or not, they are a major part of the infrastructure and we really need to actually address them. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much, Judah. Thank you for that. We've got Martin Groker as seconded, so I'll go to him next to us to speak briefly.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah. Here is the Abingavenny newspaper. Furious residents called for road improvements. That was last week. This week, the cabinet member for roads has responded. I quote, "It's incorrect for Labour councillors to claim credit for the project." Well, Chair, we are not claiming any credit. This article in the newspaper came from two letters that were written to the editor and, to be fair, to the authors and the editor. Judah Thomas and myself were named as the local members through whose wards the roads pass. The issue is not one of who raised what and when. It's about the process by which the public are allowed to get very, very aggrieved without any recourse or any proper response from officers of this authority. Now, the cabinet member in her letter to the paper this week claims that the only correspondence that she had was from another member of her own political group. Well, this is clear nonsense because the article itself talks about letters to senior officers. I have a succession of letters to officers within highways. Councillor Thomas has alluded to that. This is the basic reality as I see it. Before the pandemic, before the storms, and as councillors, we get a regular update on planned roadwork. It was quite clear that this section of road was to be resurfaced. The dates for the closure of the road were published. The contract with a local firm was agreed. I can well understand, and indeed, these complainants in our community understood, because they told me they did, that there would be a delay. So why, once we start So why, once we start getting back to normal, is the cabinet member denying that people have been outraged at what's happening and saying that it will get done? The reality is that because the contract had been let, it should have been the first job. And the prevarication that I got when I was eventually able to get any response from officers was, it might be done this financial year. What this motion is about isn't any sort of glorification of ourselves as councillors. I'm really very annoyed that that's suggested. It's about people in our community putting up with roads that are frankly extremely dangerous, not being able to get any straight answers from County Hall about what is being done when the scheme had already been put on hold. And so I second this motion. We really do need to get greater clarity in the way our officers in highways respond to people about the dreadful state of our roads. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Grokot. Thank you very much for that. Councillor Jane Pratt.
Thank you very much, Chairman. And as a matter of accuracy, I have a copy of the letter here as well, and I would draw councillor Grokot's attention to it, because I did not say I had no communication. What I said was, the first communication I had, which was well over a year ago. But I would like to begin by thanking councillor Thomas for bringing this motion to council. And I would also like to start by commending to this council the hard work done by our Highway Service. With over 1,600 kilometres of road network, this service area affects every single resident living in Monmouthshire, every business located here, and every traveller passing through the county, and the level of customer and member interaction and expectation is considerable. During the last 18 months, the service has had the additional demands of damage to our road network and highway structures caused by flooding, and the response measures to make our town safe during the COVID pandemic, performing an array of duties with a limited budget and a staff resource currently carrying a number of vacant posts. During this current financial year, the council will be spending over 6.4 million on highways improvements and maintenance, including the resurfacing of the Hereford Road, which is recognised as high priority. This also includes undertaking £855,000 worth of repairs to flood damaged roads and structures using Welsh Government funding for Storm Dennis, and we are hoping to secure a further £986,000 for flood damage repairs. This council has invested an additional £375,000 to improve proactive gully emptying throughout the county. The Highway Service is project lead for most of the 1.55 million active travel improvements, including the Clanfoyst and Wy Bridges, working with colleagues in Monlife who successfully bid for the funding. And we will be building a new town centre car park in Monmouth and resurfacing a car park in Usk in partnership with Usk Town Council, as well as continuing our programme of road safety training in schools to ensure our young people are able to walk, cycle or scoot safely to school. In addition, we will be rolling out settlement-wide 20 mile per hour zones in Abingavenny, including Clanfoyst, Seven Side, comprising Meir, Undee, Roggett, Caldicott, Carwent and Port Skewett, De Vorden, Mathan, Monmouth, including Wysham, Mindybach and Shire Newton. Additional 20 mile an hour schemes for Mountain Road and the town centre in Chepstow are also being progressed. This is not to say that there is not room for improvement in both service delivery and communication, and this is fully recognised by myself and by Mark Hand and Carl Tuig as the heads of service for highways management and operations respectively, and their teams. The staff resource issues are being addressed, and we are about to undertake a recruitment campaign to fill 12 posts. Our funding for road maintenance comes primarily from the Welsh Government and is based on the length of A and B roads. As members will recognise, this fails to recognise our extensive network of vital C and unclassified rural roads. The £627,000 funding is well short of what we need to ensure a safe and efficient road network for walkers, cyclists, public transport and car users. This limited budget requires difficult decisions to be made about which roads can be repaired and resurfaced. Decisions were unavoidably delayed this year because we received the Welsh Government's confirmation that flood recovery money would be carried forwards. Until we received it, rather, we could not confirm the maintenance programme we received. And we would all agree that an earlier confirmation of the maintenance programme for this year from Welsh Government would have been welcomed. Going forwards, officers are working on an evidence-based three-year programme for future road maintenance. A scan survey of the entire county road network has been completed, with roads classified by their need for repairs. This evidence is being supplemented by an assessment of the purpose and the use of the route, for example, if it serves amenities and utilities, recent repair needs and insurance claims. With the Select Committee's Chair's agreement, I would like to suggest that this new approach be presented to the Strong Community Select Committee in the coming months. And we are also reviewing potholing and patching techniques and moving towards carrying out more hot potholing. We are reviewing our digital approaches and systems, as was discussed in the recent Digital Members Workshop, and the use of the MyMon app for communicating with customers. I therefore recognise the issues raised by councillor Thomas and hope my comments help set some context to the significant pressures on the service and their considerable achievements in a tough 18 months. I would therefore like to propose an amendment to the motion, namely, number one, this Court Council calls on the cabinet member responsible for highways to continue to review policies and procedures of MCC Highways for the repair and maintenance of highways across the authority to ensure that they are safe and fit for purpose, and to continue to work to improve communication with customers, and that this council agrees to a cross-party lobby to the Welsh Government to review its approach to funding, requiring both multiple-year funding proposals to provide certainty for large-scale projects that stretch beyond one financial year, and a fair funding mechanism that recognises the importance of the road network in rural areas, not just to cars, but to walkers, cyclists and public transport users. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you very much, councillor Pratt.
A point of order. Is that, that's not an amendment, that's a complete rewrite. Is that allowed?
It's already, I'll ask Matt Phillips to come in and speak to you.
It's a rewrite, it's a rewrite, it's a complete rewrite.
Armand, I'll ask you to be quiet for a second, if that's okay. Matt Phillips.
Members, Matt Phillips is chief officer for people in governance and the monitoring officer. So I was given advance notice of the amendment to have the ability to weigh up whether it aligned with the constitution, which of course is my responsibility to interpret. I'm satisfied that it does continue, especially given the content of councillor Thomas's speech on the matter. I think it doesn't act to negate the original motion, and I think the debate that will ensue now will, you know, it will be for you to address the issues that you may or may not have with the amendment itself, but it doesn't act to negate it for me, and therefore I think the amendment is sound.
Okay, thank you, members. So we've had the amendment as being seconded. I'll take the local members, they're both, two at the same, exactly the same time, but I'll take the local.
Can I raise a point of clarity or point of order? This has just been put forward to council. Where does this amendment fit in as an amendment to Tudor Thomas's actual motion?
It's not an amendment. It's.
Okay, can I ask, sorry, members, can I ask you not to cross-talk over each other? Because otherwise, we won't get through this evening's business. Councillor Eton, our monitoring officer, Matt Phillips, has just explained that he's happy it is an amendment to the motion, and therefore, as far as I'm concerned as Chair, I'm happy that that concludes that point. I don't see any.
What I'm asking, does it fit in with the actual wording on top of Tudor Thomas's motion? Is it inclusive? I'm a bit confused.
It replaces the word.
Replaces it, right, thank you, thank you.
That's fine, sorry for clarity. I'm happy to move forward on the basis that the monitoring officer has said that he's happy that this is an amended motion. So it's been seconded, so we'll now discuss this as the substantive motion.
No, we can't talk about it as a substantive. We haven't voted as on the amendment, Chair.
Okay. We'll debate the amendment at this stage. Okay, so.
Chair, is it a point of order? I apologise.
If it is a point of order.
It is, really. I would like to, it's so fundamentally different from the previous one, and forgive my brain isn't as quick as it used to be. And it's not like you can do a rewrite on it like you do on your television, is it? So.
Armand, I'll close.
Can I see the amendment?
Councillor Watts, I'll close this down now, because like I've already said, it's already gone to the monitoring officer. The monitoring officer has already confirmed to the council himself, you've just heard him. But I apologise, councillor Watts, I apologise, but the monitoring officer has already confirmed that he has had advance notice of this, and he has confirmed.
The monitoring officer isn't voting on it. I'm voting on it. I'm an elected representative of the people democratically. I would like to see the amendment. It's that simple.
I ask you to refrain from your tone, please. It's not appreciated. We're all here to do business. The monitoring officer, who is the legal officer to this.
Then do it right then, Chair.
Monitoring officer. Armand, councillor Watts, I ask you please to refrain. I've already gone it over once, I don't need to go over it again. The monitoring officer has confirmed that this is an amendment. In that case, we're now moving forward on that basis. If you are unhappy with that.
I'd like to see it. Can we have it physically up in front of us?
It's in the chat bar.
Is it?
Yes.
The entire amendment?
The entire amendment has been in the chat bar whilst you've been speaking.
Right, thank you. You could have said that.
Well, you didn't ask the question, I'll put it.
You kept on interrupting me.
Councillor Watts, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we'll go to councillor Frances Taylor first. Thank you. Armand, your camera is on. Councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Chair. I don't know if you can see me yet, but as I said, I've got a bit of a lag, but I am. Yeah, if you could. Can I say, you've made a determination about the veracity of the amendments, and, you know, I accept that. I do think, however, what I've heard in councillor Thomas's motion was very much about the process, about the way in which the matters were dealt with. Councillor Pratt, with all respect, spoke at length and at great length, obviously you allowed her to speak for longer than the allotted five minutes, about the whole of the highway operation, and I'm not really sure that it addressed councillor Thomas's original points, which very much are about the way in which we go about raising issues and having them attended to. And there's clearly some matters of policy, procedure and communication in there, which are really important. I don't want to talk about any other roads, but we know that our highways department are very poorly resourced and have had very great difficulties in recruiting. I very much value our highway colleagues. However, I would say, and I hope we've learnt, and this is my point, Chair, I hope we've learnt some lessons. I would ask the cabinet member to respond to whether we've learnt lessons around succession planning, because we obviously have had a number of engineers leave, we haven't been able to replace them, but maybe we could have been thinking about that a long time ago, and I would like some reassurance that this council is very much thinking about that, in particular in roles that we find difficult to recruit, so that we don't have this continued cycle of losing officers to other authorities without having plans in place to be able to perhaps train, because that takes a long time to train up a highway engineer. But there are clearly matters of communication, and I do think it's a very visible service. It's a very important service to people in the county. And for me, it very much isn't about political point scoring, but it is very, very much about the fact that we need a fit-for-purpose process where issues can be raised, attended and dealt with, and if there are reasons why not, local members can be availed of that information, because it is them that are usually in the position where they need to respond to local people. And with all due respect, whilst our highway officers, you know, work very hard and lots of jobs on their time, they are not always the people that are there having the concerns of community members and residents brought to them, Chair, and I'm sure you know how that feels yourself. So thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. And just a point of clarification there, it's, members have 10 minutes to speak, not five minutes, and so councillor Pratt was well within her time of speaking. Councillor Maureen Powell.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to speak on the amendment. We know.
Sorry, Maureen, just for clarity then, we're all speaking on the amendment now.
Yes.
And it's from our, we are in, the time is running away from us a bit, so if we can make it so that it's not too parochial, it'll be fantastic.
No, it won't be, it won't be. We know, and councillor Pratt has told us, the huge mileage of roads we've got in this county, and it's not just here in Abingavenny, it's other towns and it's out in country roads, so therefore, there's an awful lot to get over, and we are short of money to do it. But I do want to speak on behalf of the officers that work in this authority. All the time that I've been a councillor, it is quite a few years now, I've always had a response, almost directly, when I've reported anything, and they've told me whether it could be done fairly soon or whether it would be further down the list, and I've accepted that. But they've always responded to me, so I'm very surprised that the councillors that have spoken earlier are complaining that they haven't been replied to. But I just want to say that. I know they're short-staffed, but they always have replied to me straight away, even if they can't say it's going to be done quite soon. So that's why I'm supporting the amendment.
Thank you, councillor Powell. Councillor Petrucci, Dimitri.
Thank you, Chair. First, I disagree with the monitoring officer. I mean, I know that means nothing, but this is not an amendment. As you said yourself, it's a replacement, and now I know that we're allowed to do that, that's good to know as the opposition. I can just rewrite motions, great. So that's duly noted. On the amendment itself, Chair, it's an amendment of excuses, of prevarication, and typical of this cabinet member who, since taking this post, has run it into the ground, it's a disaster zone, and blaming the Welsh Government for everything that goes wrong in this county, like they have no say over budgets, like they have no say over recruitment, like they have no say about planning, as councillor Taylor rightly alluded to, who has expressed it in far politer tone and terms than I can, because my rage is obvious to everyone, is the indignant way councillor Pratt just says there's lots of roads. Yeah, well, you've been a job for a couple of years now, like that's a revelation. It's just a shocker, and this amendment is just nothing but a whitewash to blame the Welsh Government for this cabinet member's personal failure and for this entire cabinet for running the roads in Monmouthshire down to the ground. Now, they can come up with excuses, they come up with blaming the Welsh Government, but this amendment is a joke, it's not even an amendment, I'll just call it replacement, and duly noted as the opposition that you can do that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Petrucci. Councillor Ruth Edwards.
Thank you very much, Chair. Yes, I questioned the five minutes, as councillor Taylor said, because we have 10 minutes, I know, in planning for any council to speak, but we've cleared that. But also, could they include it in the end of the amendment when it says about car users and cyclists and walkers, to please include all rural industries that we rely on, not just farming, but there's quite a lot of industries in the countryside that like to use these roads, and yes, I think we do need to spend an awful lot of money on our roads, but the pot is running dry. lot of money on our roads, but the pot is running dry because we do have other statutory commitments. And, um, I believe ever since I've been on the council, highways has been robbed of resources time and time again. But we do have the weather that's been thrown at us, the environment, and it does undermine the road services greatly. And people travel on these roads far more than what they ever used to. We just have to be patient. And everywhere, I should think, every ward can find a piece of road that's in dire need of repair. But I think, um, to criticize the cabinet member, Counselor Pratt, is really uncalled for. She's got a very big, heavy workload to do and she does it with grace and commitment that a lot of people wouldn't half tolerate, because I don't think it's fair, because she does do an awful lot of hard work, especially in the scenes and trying to do her best. But if you've only got a certain amount of resources, you'll have to go with it. Thank you very much, Chair, and I wish to support the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Counselor Edwards. And I'll take your, um, your, in, in good grace, I'll take your, um, proposed alteration as a point as opposed to an amendment, if that's okay.
Right. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you very much. Um, okay. Counselor, uh, Sheila Woodhouse.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, I, I seconded this, um, motion because yes, I do appreciate all that Counselor Pratt has, as is fully explained to us, we do have difficulties and a review of policies and procedures would be most welcome. And I appreciate the offer from her and also the offer to bring it to, to strong communities when, when she has, um, further information about this. So I will, I am supporting it. Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Counselor Armand Watts.
I, thank, thank you, Chair. Was I?
Chair, I dropped my hand there before.
Oh, sorry.
I beg your pardon. I beg your pardon. No, Tudor, uh, Counselor Tudor Thomas.
Sorry, Armand.
Fine.
Yeah, you know, the whole point of bringing this motion and the whole point of me being on the council is to represent people in my ward. And, and all political issues aside, there are lots of people who don't understand how the bureaucratic system works and they, they, they fill in the, the, fill my pothole and, and it literally falls into a pothole. And people get frustrated and, you know, the diatribe I've had from the cabinet member will not help those people travelling that road and it doesn't answer their questions. And in terms of the length of road, I've travelled the whole of Wales, uh, doing my job in the past. And I, I travelled from Abberystwyth back to Aberystwyth the other day, crossing Keridigion, Powys, et cetera. Uh, their roads, they've got equally long roads. Powys has probably got longer roads, but they don't have the same issues. I totally refute, uh, the sort of ripping up of my motion. And it does question then the point, what is the point of bringing a motion for, uh, discussion? I, I feel very frustrated. And I know that people in Aberystwyth will feel frustrated at the response I've had today, because it's really just been a bit of a whitewash. So totally unacceptable. Thanks.
Thank you. Before I move any further on, uh, what I will say is that, and I'll remind members again, is that we have taken the advice of the Monitoring Officer and the Monitoring Officer is quite content of this process and this procedure. So I don't see any point in us dwelling or I don't see any, any mileage or profit in us dwelling on that point any further. So, um, with that being said, Counselor Armand Watts.
Yeah, with that being said, Chair, you know, it is a democracy and people can express an opinion, even if they want to disagree with the Monitoring Officer, who I think is a very capable, able, uh, officer of this authority. I can't necessarily say that, that I see that in that specific department. I've seen a decline in that department overall. Uh, and I, and I do genuinely wonder whether or not, I mean, I've got a response here, which was a forced response eventually after there was a complaint put in, and I won't name names, of, of a complaint that I put in about sheer bulk sticking out of sleeping policemen, uh, in my ward, which raised a number of complaints from a supplier to Malmesher County Council, who had then passed it on. That, that complaint was raised, the initial complaint was raised on the 28th of April. Uh, and it was only yet the day before yesterday or three days ago, I got a response then from highways. Now, I appreciate everything that Jane says. It's true. Yeah, what she says inasmuch as that we've had a loss of staff, it's been a struggle, that this, 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 not the capacity. Uh, Chair, have you, you've disappeared? Or have I disappeared? Chair. Chair, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Sorry, Armand. Yes.
Yeah. Did you, um?
I hear you.
You done, Chair? I'm not sure if you muted me.
No, I didn't mute you. No, no.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for not muting me this time. Um, look, so really what I'm concerned about is whether or not this authority, uh, thinks that this particular department is fit for purpose anymore, because it really is frustrating for elected members to effectively then taking phone calls late into the evening, uh, over issues that they have absolutely no control. And when you tell them, they wonder what the hell is wrong with you when you can't get a response then from this. And all Jane does is double down, really. I mean, I've never seen such a lackluster, this, it's completely, it has no direction, really. Uh, and I would, I would really think that, you know, she needs to pull her socks up. Really. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Watts. Counselor Giles, uh, how, Counselor Howard Giles, Giles Howard, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Pekins, Matt. Yeah, I, well, I want to respond very, very briefly to, to Armand's comments. They're pretty disgraceful. I think Jane does a, a, a great job. It's, it's a thankless one, but it's no more than I'd expect from him. Tudor's comments about roads across Wales, I think that the routes he mentioned from Keridigion across Powys, but to remember that a lot of those are trunk routes. And if you go off the beaten track, then I'm pretty sure if you look at, um, Blaine, Gwent, Torvine, parts of RCT, we know where they are. The roads are in just as bad state, because a lot of councils have been focusing on directing funds towards social service and education, just like we have. And I understand that argument, but I also accept that there's an issue with the state of our highway network. But I support the amendment. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. I'm with that. I'm happy to move to the vote. Uh, and whilst that comes up in the chat bar, uh, back to you, Counselor Pratt, if you have any. No? No, right, it's a reply. Okay, so we're straight to the chat, we're straight to the vote in that case. Just on the amendment, this is on the amendment. Should come in the chat bar any minute.
All right, okay.
Okay, so the amendment has been successful?
Yes.
It's carried. Thank you very much. So we're now debating the amended motion. Or if we feel that we've had enough debate, we can go straight to the vote on that amended motion.
I move the question be put, Chair. It's Giles.
I second.
Okay.
Chair, no, I wish to make an amendment if we're going to play these games.
We'll, we'll wait for the, uh, for the raised hands function to come in to the chat bar, first of all.
Who seconded?
So that was moved and seconded by Jamie, uh, Counselor Jamie Chahan.
All right. It's probably the first thing he's ever said in this council.
Counselor Watts, I don't think that's particularly, uh, relevant or, or, um, appropriate, to be honest. Um. Okay, we have, uh, Counselor Dimitri Betruni.
Chair, I, I wish to make an amendment to the replacement, please. I wish to amend removing, uh, point two. The Welsh Government is, uh, I'm disagreeing with the Monitoring Officer. The Welsh Government's got nothing to do with, uh, Counselor Tudor Thomas's motion. I don't see how the Monitoring Officer thinks it is. Um, and I don't think it should be included and, and even seen as an amendment. And therefore, I should believe we should remove item two.
Okay. Counselor Dimitri, do, uh, Counselor Betruni, do you have a second for your?
I second it, Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm happy to take that to the vote now, as opposed to debating that at any length. If we can have that in the chat bar. And this is, this is going to be for or against removing item two. That, we just put that, that is, that's the second or that's, that's number one or number two? That is, that's number one. Okay. Okay, so the Monitoring Officer has just put in the chat bar, the, initially it was one point, one and two. Counselor Watts, your camera's on again. Thank you. Uh, so initially we had one and two points. Counselor Betruni has asked for point two to be removed. That leaves point just one standing. And this is going to be now voting for Counselor Betruni's amendment. Thank you, Members. That, that, that has failed, which leaves us with the substantive motion being the original, or original amended motion as put forward by Jane, Counselor Jane Pratt. So the substantive motion is now before us. I think we've had enough discussion on this already, so I'm happy to put that to the vote. We can ask them.
There were some people who wanted to speak originally, so I might just say that. Because you had Counselor Easton.
Okay. Just before we go to the vote, I'll just ask, there was some people who.
So we had Counselor Easton, um, the others, and Counselor Harris. So the others have all spoken, so.
Okay. So we had two, two members earlier on, Counselor Harris and Counselor Eason, who didn't get a chance to speak before the amendment came in. Do you wish to speak to this amended motion?
No, I don't want to speak at all, Chair. We've gone too far on this.
Thank you.
Uh, what point?
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Harris, for that. Okay, so we're now voting on the substantive motion. The, um. Counselor Thomas, if you wish to speak to this now, you have a right to apply.
What, to the, to Jane, to Counselor Jane Pratt's amendment?
That's right.
Yeah, I, I've got very little to say really, but I'm just shocked that, um, my amendment, my, uh, motion was totally ripped up. It'll obviously set the, the future seed. I've been on the council four years. I've nev-, I've never seen anything like this happen before and I think it's totally unsatisfactory. And it'll certainly be very unsatisfactory to be living in Malmesher. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Tudor, for that. Thank you. Okay. So, so, so Members, I can happily confirm that that has been carried. So thank you very much for all your comments, uh, in that lively debate. Thank you. Um, and we'll move on to item 6.7, uh, which is the motion submitted by County Counselor Dimitri Betruni. Dimitri.
Um, I might even say thanks, Chair. What a, what an absolute joke this is. Um, okay. Well, then I hope that Counselor John Ledesley, with the officers, agree to replace this whole motion. I put a motion to, um, create a task force to help, uh, to formulate a plan to regenerate, uh, Bulwark and Thornwell, particularly the shops area. Uh, my residents have, um, asked me to, uh, over the years, uh, put, uh, make, help regenerate the shops. But the problem with the shops, as I've discovered, is there's multiple private ownerships, uh, Malmesher Housing Association, um, and council owned as well. And so I should declare an interest. That's, uh, my motion includes MHA and one MHA board. Um, and it's just to create a, uh, to think about creating a task force to, in order to regenerate that shop area, but also the wider community. It's often neglected, in my view, over Chepstow Town Centre, and it's not right, it's not appropriate, and it should get the recognition it deserves. But I'm at the whim of whatever you guys have decided anyway. That's the point.
Uh, Counselor Armand Watts.
Yeah, I mean, after the last motion, it's almost pointless, really. It's like with members of some banana republic. But I'll make my point, which is this, Chair, far too long now, Chepstow, Bulwark, uh, in particular, Greater Bulwark, whatever you want to call it, under the new changes, uh, so Bulwark and Thornwell have been neglected by Malmesher County Council. The entirety of its focus, um, is being really on the town centre. And, and to some degree, I understand that, because it's always had more shops. But interestingly, over the years, um, from a sustainable economic perspective, that, you know, Bulwark itself has raised more council taxing revenue than any other part of Chepstow, any other part by a long way. And yet they always get, well, next to nothing. It looks dejected, it looks rundown, it, it doesn't really have enough attention. You know, you can't even raise your game or highways or whatever it is to, to put, you know, some decent planters out there. Um, there's, there's no follow-up on the shops really to ensure that they're keeping the frontage tidy. Uh, there's a disinterest in that. And, and that is because they don't, they don't matter. In some way, those people are lesser second-class citizens, I think, uh, because, you know, Malmesher doesn't care about them. Um, and that, and that frustrates me. So I'm, I'm happy, more than happy to support Dimitri's, um, motion. I think it's, uh, it's well thought out. I think it's timely, uh, especially with the town centre and that the, the entirety and the focus on, again, on the town centre. God knows how much money, uh, even an FYI, um, will, will even get out how much money has been wasted on that scheme. So I really think it does need some kind of economic regeneration. And, um, you know, I think Chepstow, you know, certainly Bulwark citizens, as I should say, and Thornwell deserve much more than they've been getting out of the local authority, uh, since the, well, since I've been elected, really, which is probably, what, close to 17 years now. Um, they've been undersold. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Watts. Uh, Counselor Watts, before I move any further, was you seconding? Was you happy to second Dimitri's?
I was seconding, yes.
Thank you. That's fine. Uh, Counselor Frances Taylor.
Um, thank you, Chair. Uh, very briefly, I, um, you know, sort of have great sympathy with, uh, and empathy with the, with the matters that, um, that Dimitri's raising in his motion. And I think there are areas of Malmesher, uh, like, um, he describes that, that really do merit some specific attention. I note that Counselor Jones is, the cabinet member for regeneration, is, is, is asked to speak. And so hopefully she'll have something positive to, to say. But, um, and although the issues are certainly not the same, but because, you know, Mager is not a town, it doesn't attract Welsh Government funding. And I imagine that's the same with, um, Bulwark. I appreciate the issues are slightly different. But we do have, um, a situation in Malmesher where we have areas that are entirely overlooked. Um, and our focus is on the sort of, you know, the whilst we want to be, uh, kind of future looking and, um, you know, some of our attention is on the way things used to be. Um, and whilst that is, you know, I'm absolutely supportive of, of, um, heritage and, and ensuring that we maintain that, um, there are, that, you know, Malmesher looks different to how it used to. And, um, you know, the way we're organised perhaps needs to follow that. Um, and we perhaps need to think how we are going to take different approaches to different areas of Malmesher. So, um, I, I can certainly see why, uh, Counselor Betruni has, um, submitted, uh, this motion. And I can't help wondering if there's going to be a very significant amendment, uh, which entirely changes the sense of the motion. But, but thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Frances. Counselor Sarah Jones.
Thanks, Chair. Um, I'll just make a couple of brief points. I don't want to extend the meeting any longer than we need to. Um, just to say, um, it, there is an issue here in terms of, and Counselor Taylor very eloquently put it, in terms of the access to funding. So there is a reason why some of our towns have had significant investment. And it's, it is thanks to Welsh Government, it's to their funding. But the stipulations around that funding is it has to be spent in the town. We cannot withdraw or divert that funding into other areas, because it has a very specific parameter around it. That's not to say that we shouldn't be looking at solutions for other areas for regeneration. And that's something that I want to support through this motion. And Counselor Taylor, you're right, there will be an amendment from me, but, um, it won't be too different to the original motion. So my amendment is such, if that's okay, Chair, um, it's for the council to work with the local members to explore the best approach to develop a Bulwark and Thornwell task force, consisting of members of the community, local business, the town council, and representatives from MHA to explore options to regenerate this specific area of Chepstow. So a very small amendment at the beginning, which, which calls around a sort of, um, a consideration of how we take this forward with local members, because I think the best approach to this is to have that consultation. I'm not clear, um, what you want the outcome of this to be. Of course, it's to see regeneration. you want the outcome of this to be, of course it's to see regeneration, but how do you want to go about that, for me personally, in my own areas where I've looked at community-led plans, for example, I as a local member have driven that, um, I've worked hard to develop that with my community, bringing in business, bringing in the local authority and others, and maybe that's something we need to look at, because that co-production approach, um, will get more buy-in and ownership in terms of what the regeneration outcomes could look like, so I don't want to detract from the essence of the motion though, because I think councillor Betruni, um, has made a very positive motion, it's something I think we can all sign up to, we want to see regeneration right across the county, so I absolutely do support that, and, um, I'll look to work with him and, and with councillor Watts to, to make that happen, um, I know there's a lot of, it seems to be a lot of angst this afternoon now, and particularly now, I mean, I do want to say that there was an opportunity, there's always been opportunities to bring these sort of motions forward, um, you mentioned this has been overlooked for many years, well, you know, do feel free to bring these motions forward when you need to, you know, not, not to necessarily leave it to, to this point now, so, um, I'm very happy to work with the members, um, and happy to support this under the amended motion.
Thank you, do you have a second for your motion, amendment?
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Thank you, thank you, um, right, the raised hand, uh, bar, box has gone into the speech, uh, into the chat bar, um, councillor Betruni.
Um, firstly, I'd like to thank the cabinet member for understanding what her amendment is, maybe she could explain that to the monitoring officer and the chair, on the, so I, I, I'm happy to accept that, I didn't, uh, the, the little thing about, oh, um, you, you had plenty of time to bring this motion was unnecessary, um, I didn't expect the Conservative Council to neglect it, so, um, they have, so we're forced to do more, uh, strident moves, but happy to be, uh, co-produced, um, happy to collaborate, happy to regenerate, and hopefully we can level, get in some level up funding, and not, uh, into the Bulwark area where it's desperately needed.
Thank you councillor Betruni, so now we're, we're debating amendment, councillor Arma Watts.
Yeah, sorry Chair, I was, yeah, you can hear me all right, yeah, I, I, the only issue I have with it is, uh, it, it's a kind of bit wordy, but, you know, it's, um, you know, I guess that's Sarah's professional perspective on it, um, the, 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 the other point is though, that when she, she mentions that we work with Mammashia Housing, uh, the difficulty is there are a number of other kind of, uh, housing associations that operate, uh, uh, throughout Mammashia, they also have a, a commercial arm as well, which kind of duplicates, I guess, what they, they do, um, so I'm not entirely sure how productive they would, I think, you know, if you, if you effectively work with, um, local people, I mean, certainly this, there's a lot of opinions on social media, uh, and some of them are very valid actually, uh, about what they, what, you know, their expectations are, what their opinions are, um, these people are, you know, have got their own imagination, what they don't want to be doing is, uh, or sat in a room being kind of like officers spoken to, uh, in a similar vein as some of the speak that we've already heard, talked down to, um, by someone who hasn't really been, uh, there for, well, ever, really, maybe their first time ever in Bulwark, so I think we need some, you know, Dimitri and I are obviously quite outspoken, um, very strong, uh, on defending our constituents and the interests of those constituents, so I'm more than happy to, to, to work hard on it, but, um, you know, I, I'm still not convinced by dragging in Mammashia Housing, it's, it's really their thing, if I'm honest, thank you Chair.
Thank you, I'm happy to take this straight to the vote on the amendment, we could have that in the chat bar please. Okay, members can vote for the amended, for the amendment, for the amendment please. Okay, that's carried, so that now becomes the substantive motion. So there are no more raised hands at the moment, just wait another moment in case anyone wants to switch, someone else wants you to speak. If not, it's back to you councillor Betruni. Whilst we ask democratic services to put a new, uh, voting box in the chat bar.
No, it's fine.
Uh, councillor Betruni, was that you then, I did, I missed that, sorry, did, did you have nothing else to say?
No.
Okay, thank you, okay, so Members, that's now in, back in the chat bar to vote on the substantive motion, as changed by councillor Sarah Jones. And that's carried, thank you very much everyone for that, um, and, uh, Members, you'll be very pleased to know that that is the end of the motions for today, um, so all we have left before us is, or are the members' questions at item seven, uh, we have two members' questions, uh, the first is from Paul Jordan to, uh, Paul, Paul Pavia, cabinet member for education, uh, councillor Jordan, are you happy to take that as read?
Yes, take that as read Chair.
Thank you very much, councillor Paul Pavia.
Sorry Chair, just having a few technical issues here, yeah, can I thank councillor Jordan for his, uh, question, um, he, he probably will appreciate, we're not at that stage of the design process yet to be able to give this level of detail, uh, as a local Abogatany Member, he, he will be aware that we're still currently out, uh, on consultation on the function and governance architecture for the proposed new school, and, and I think we've been really clear in going into that consultation, that we had to separate cons- consulting on and agreeing the function of the new school as opposed to what the school, uh, new school might look like, however, net carbon, uh, net zero carbon is very much on the agenda for the 21st Schools project, uh, and officers have produced performance and briefing documents for the contract and design teams, which align to the Welsh Government and council's commitment to decarbonisation, and, and we've also engaged external experts to assist up with, to assist us with this work, um, I can assure the member that the project has been specified as being a net carbon zero operational energy, which, uh, has to be a Bremen excellent requirement, and, and all of Mammashia's new builds have been, uh, Bremen, Bremen excellent, uh, cer- certified, and during the next stages of the project, a feasibility study will evaluate various, um, appropriate low and zero carbon technologies to determine suitability, uh, and around capacity and cost, and this will, this report will, uh, provide recommendations of renewable energy systems, and obviously on the receipt of that report, the project's actual technologies will be chosen.
Thank you. Do you have a supplementary question, councillor Jordan?
Yes, I do, um, will we take the opportunity of the exciting new school development to engage our pupils across Abogatany in understanding the effects of climate change and how we can mitigate them?
Yeah, can I, can I thank him for this supplementary, absolutely, I think we, we will be doing that, um, the pupil voice is extremely important, uh, and it has been through this, uh, current consultation process, I think all schools, um, with the rollout of the new curriculum next year have focused on the importance of the environment and how that aligns the new curriculum aims of being, uh, an ethical, informed citizen of Wales and the world, um, and as the development of the school takes place, there will be opportunities for, for real time learning with the contractors, as the plans become more detailed, and, and learners will be able to model and manage, uh, and, and study the energy usage of, of the new, uh, school building, um, uh, obviously, when we get to the, uh, design phase, the pupil voice will be, uh, instrumental in helping us shape that, uh, design process, so, um, yeah, absolutely, that they will be in- involved from the very start, yeah, thanks.
Thank you very much, we'll move on then to, uh, seven point two, uh, which is from county councillor Martin Grokut to councillor Paul Pavia again, cabinet member for education, Martin, are you happy to take that as read?
Yep, as printed, yeah.
Very much, thank you.
Yeah, can I thank, again thank councillor Grokut for his question, uh, as obviously as a governor of King Henry, he's been very involved in the consultation process that is, uh, still ongoing and which concludes tomorrow, the deadline is tomorrow, uh, he will know as well as, as a former CYP chair, that we advocate a mixed economy of early years education provision in, in Mammashia, which is providing a combination of local authority maintained nursery classes and non-maintained settings, uh, it, it was decided, uh, that in this development, um, on the Banby School Project for Abogatany to test the option to provide, uh, early education in non-maintained setting, rather than a school nursery class through, through the consultation process, you know, as, as he, uh, will know, that consultation process concludes tomorrow, so no final decision has been made, we've been very open during the consultation process that we really, uh, want to hear the voice, not just of parents and pupils and staff, but of, of the wider community, and we've had that engagement, and, and I can assure him that when the final decision is made, uh, as to whether to provide early education through a non-maintained setting or to include the nursery provision with the school and establish a three to 19 school, it will be made, taken into account to all the responses that we receive through the consultation process, um, in relation to the, the, the last part of the question, again, we're still very premature, uh, because the consultation hasn't concluded, so no decisions have been taken, however, the authority has a jobs protection scheme and, and any decision that will affect staff will ensure that there is full engagement with those staff, as well as HR, professional bodies and unions, thanks Chair.
Martin, did you have a supplementary?
Uh, yes please Chair, uh, very quickly, I, I am aware that councillor Pavia, uh, was at the parents' meeting at Derry View School the other night with, uh, Mr McLean, um, I wonder if he is aware of the opposition to the loss of maintained nursery provision at the new school, not just among parents, but among the whole community in my ward, which, which is the area in which Derry View School is found, um, and, and, and the feeling which I'm hearing over and over again is that this is another example of the authority doing things to the community, not doing things with the community, uh, I, I'm glad to hear him say quite clearly that there is no final decision yet, but is he aware just of the, 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 um, feeling of the local community that this is something, that this, this maintained nursery provision is something of which they are very proud and would hate to lose when the new school is built?
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, can I, can I thank, uh, Martin for his supplementary, a- absolutely, I think the discussions in, in all the, uh, consultation sessions, particularly with, uh, Derry View, uh, parents and staff, um, you know, they, they've advocated really, really strongly about, uh, maintaining, um, the nursery provision as, as part of the school, uh, we, we've heard that loud and clear, we're very cognizant of that, and it will be reflected in, um, the, the report that will come to cabinet to, for, for making a final decision, um, you know, there, I, I think there's advantages for and against, uh, and, and I know, uh, when that consultation report will be produced, it will be extremely balanced.
Thank you very much Paul, okay, moving on to agenda item number eight, uh, which is to confirm the minutes held on the 13th of May 2021, they have been certated in the pack, does anyone have any questions or comments, or is someone happy to move those?
I'll move, I'll move councillor Fekin.
Thank you very much, that's moved by councillor Ruth Edwards, is a second for that please?
Second.
Thank you very much, councillor Moore, he's seconded as well, so we put that to the vote. Just wait for that to come into the chat bar please.
Well done Chairman on your meeting.
Thank you very much, what, what I would say, just while I've got Members with me still, it's just a bit of a postscript, is that, um, it's, it's been a five hour meeting, we've achieved a lot of business, um, and I'm very grateful to everyone's input in the meeting, uh, but I would like to remind Members that their aggressive behaviour or bullying behaviour and putting up Members for not voting on other items, uh, I, I don't think is appropriate, um, and I would ask Members, if they're un, if they're unsure of their actions in this meeting, to watch back this video and just see how they've come across to the general public, because I wasn't comfortable within it, and I would imagine that those Members looking back on themselves might not also be comfortable, so I would urge Members to do that leg of work, um, and hopefully the next meeting will not be quite as aggressive or as, uh, as, as bullying as this one has been, uh, but, uh, thank you very much all, that's.
Well said councillor Fekin, and you did keep calm and conducted to great, to great dignity, I should say, it isn't always easy chairing when it's live streamed, as I find in planning, because you do get some aggression, but keep calm and carry on, as they said, and you did very well on your first council meeting.
Thank you very much all.
Well said councillor, well said.
Well done Matt.
Thank you very much Members, thank you very much all for your support, and we look forward to seeing you again soon, thank you, bye.